Thank you very much. I do want to give notice that we had an executive session this evening to discuss informational and legal issues. I have two presentations this evening. The first is for our wonderful Shade Tree Commission, and I had acknowledged this back in April, the end of April, that they received the Governor's Award for Environmental Excellence in 2024. And we have some representatives here tonight to share, but I want to just talk it up a little bit more. This Shade Tree Commission was one of 22 statewide recipients to be honored by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection with the 2024 Governor's Award for Environmental Excellence. The interim acting secretary, Jessica Shirley, stated that the honorees showcase the innovative ways we can protect our environment and shape a more sustainable future here in Philadelphia. The Shade Tree Commission was recognized on a ceremony April 30th in Harrisburg, and I hear we have the award with us. Oh, two awards. Excellent. Come on up. We want to see them. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll just say two quick words. Thank you. We'll do a quick photo op here in a second. We have two awards. But we couldn't have done this great work without everyone here, the township staff, and all of our volunteer partners. And I feel as if in Radnor Township, we finally have a great critical mass of people being aware of trees and environmentalism and doing their part to help beautify Radnor and maintain our canopy. So thank you, and we'll do a quick photo op if you guys don't mind.
Perfect. I have one more, very light in my heart, letter of combination, commendation, to be awarded to Keely Seymour. Keely, you want to come on up? And the chief will help me with this, but first I'm just going to read the letter of commendation. Whereas Radnor Township Police Department wishes to acknowledge Keely Seymour, a Radnor resident, for her support and leadership in building the community support unit. Whereas Keely Seymour is a certified LCSW, CEDS, PMH-C, and owns her own practice, Evolve Counseling Services. Whereas Keely Seymour provided direction to the Radnor Police Department and volunteered her own time for the interview process and provided professional input for development of the community support unit and its policies. Whereas this type of community police support with the Radnor Police Department is very beneficial to our community, and we're presenting this today by the Board of Commissioners to Keely Seymour.
I want to be real brief, but Keely is a Radnor resident, lives in our Garrett Hills section. We came to know her, and as the award stated, she volunteered her time. And I think it's just volunteers being involved in the township, and especially the police department, really just creates such a great connection with the community. So I do want to thank her and also her amazing family in the back. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right. The next presentation is Mr. Foster, the Director of Public Works, who's going to speak to us about some of the risk assessment and tree removal plan. Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me the chance to go over the action plan for the tree risk that we have from Mr. Hosbeck about a month ago. Also township staff for helping review the plan, and all of the residents in Radnor. Just want to thank you for the chance to be able to speak. So back in May 22, 22nd, we had the chance to go before Shade Tree after we had the chance to go in front of you on the 13th. You gave us some recommendations as to the plan, the findings, which was 255 trees. There was about 92 prunings. And the one thing that you had mentioned when we said we had a three-year action plan was, instead of it being a 10-year assessment of the trails, which would consist of Ithem Valley and also the Skunk Hollow Trail, you said you wanted to see that drop down to five years. So that is something that we made the adjustment with. Shade Tree also agreed with that assessment of changing it to five years. The only trail that is not going to be under that consideration is the Radnor Trail. Because of the amount of usage that that trail gets, we felt that was necessary to do that at a higher clip. A lot of times we have storms in a township, and we will shut that trail down until it gets assessed by the Township Arbors, John Hosbeck. But in regards to all the other parks and trees that are in those parks, we usually have those assessed on a one-to-two-year frequency. The new information that I wanted to touch on before we go into the plan was there is a new matrix. When we were also here the last time, you asked for a map, which showed where all these trees were located. You have since received that map with the new matrix. The difference with that new matrix compared to the old, it was 255. Now this new matrix has 271. And that was because when the Township Arbors went out to map all these trees, he also realized that 16 more had declined. So in that three-month period, we see the difference of what happened, and he can speak to that if there are any questions after the presentation is over. So we had an additional 16 hazardous trees, which brought the total to 271, 93 prunings. And the one thing that we want to make sure that everyone in the public, whether you're here in person or you're at home, that matrix and maps is found on a township website under the Public Works Department. There's a tab to the left. At the very bottom, you go through all the items. You'll find everything mapped there for your viewing pleasure, if you so choose to describe it that way. And the last part that I wanted to mention, if anyone's asking about how we're going to do a replanting effort, we have commissioned the Shade Tree to come up with a plan for how that's going to happen. When talking to the Township Manager, Mr. White, he just asked that they correlate those discussions in the budget time, which would be around September-ish. So they'll probably have something to you in regards to what we'll do as far as replanting around that timeline. So that brings us to the authorized work. We had emergency trees that, when we mentioned all the hazardous trees, the board said, okay, we'll give us the worst of the hazard. They're all hazards, but you wanted the worst of the worst, if you will. And initially, we came up with about 35, 36s in that ballpark. But the problem was, we had to see how many we could get in for that 25,000. And when it all came down to it, we could only get about 11 removed by the emergency tree contractor. And you see the price there in front of you totaling $24,200. But what we felt like in the Public Works Department, that we would be able to assist. So that number is showing 16 because the Parks Department, Parks, Steve Ledgerton, agreed to be able to remove some of those trees in-house to have a savings. Now, that's a small savings with that because we also have to make sure that we can be safe. So those trees that they selected to do, that's what it amounted to. And one figure that's also in the emergency tree removal is one tree pruning. But there's additional action that still has to go forth, and that would be 42 trees addition that the Parks Department said they would be able to remove. And we estimated those savings at about 25,000. So that leaves us with a balance of about 212 trees that we would have to bid. Now, I'm not going to go through all of these line items because it would be too much. And I don't want to speed this up because I want to leave the questions for you if you have any. So in our three-year action plan, in year one, starting with 2025, the parks that we've selected was Odoricio, Willows, and Fenimore. And that was after talking to Director Cohen with the most-used parks, heavily populated, events, and so forth and so on. So out of those three parks, we totaled 46 prunings, 76 removals. And you can drop down and see the other information of how we came up to those numbers, with Public Works removing some and also the emergency contractor. Then we go on to year two for the removals. We total 2026, 40 prunings, 50 removals, and that covers nine parks. So you have Ditmar, O'Connor, Emlyn-Tennell, Veterans Park, Cowan, Radnor Memorial, Radnor Nature, Uncofer, and Petree. And even though this park is listed, I do want to bring attention to Brook Street Park or Bishop Richard Allen, as it is known. It had one tree. That one tree that was at that park was actually outside of the park boundaries. It was outside the fence, but it was a risk to fall inside and do some damage. That tree has since fell, but it fell onto the private property where it was located. So that is why that one tree is now removed from the list. Year three, 2027, we have just one park, and that's Ithem Valley Park, which is 86 total trees, but only 85 will go to bid with six prunings. And the reason why we broke it out in this way, and there can be questions about that, why it's just one park in one year, is out of the 211 trees, it would be nice if I could do 70 every year. But because I wouldn't do Ithem Valley and take down 70 trees, and then come back in another year to take down the other 15, so it just made sense to put it as a standalone in a year by itself and tackle more parks as we see what happened in the plan for the second year for the removal. And this is just a summary of what we just talked about, just short and sweet, not looking at all the parks, just going through what's happening in 2024 this year with the emergency accident, the one pruning, the 16 removals spanning seven parks to 2025, the 46 pruning, 76 removals spanning three parks, 2026, we have 40 prunings, 50 removals, nine parks, and subsequently what happens in 2027 with Ithem. And also figuring into that number that the township Public Works Department, Parks Department specifically, will remove those 40 trees. So that gives us that total of 270 and a 93 pruning, so it puts us into everything being covered. And that was the action plan that we had talked about, about spanning it over three years. If you have any questions, I would love to entertain them, whether I'll answer them or we have the Township Arbors to be able to jump in also.
Commissioner Riley.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. On the removals, especially in like the bigger wooded parks, instead of removal, or some just going to be, say if they're not going across a path, but just in the woods on the ground, are we going to leave some, just, you know, let it drop and just let it stay there?
Yes. When you say let it drop, the one thing that we want to make sure that we do is in felling trees, is not risk other healthy trees that are there. So it still has to be a careful process. But when I talked about it with the Township Arbors, we will leave what's called stacks, so the wildlife can still be there. So let's say there's a 10-foot portion of the tree that may be left for wildlife to inhabit, and also you may leave a log on there for the animals and just the wildlife to be able to inhabit and feed on.
Very good. Thanks.
And any further questions? Commissioner Abel.
So just want to focus on Ditmar for a minute. I think one of the early trees to be removed is located on the perimeter, or maybe it's pruned. I can't remember exactly what the state is. How did that tree get selected if it's on the perimeter versus two trees that are, that sit directly on the walking path? And if they fell, they're either going on the two benches that are below them on the walking path on the sports field, or if it falls backwards, it's going into the parking lot of St. David's Church. Like, how was the tree on the perimeter selected versus those two trees?
Well, we had a list of about 35 trees that was initially out of the emergency. So when we got the prices, we weren't able to fit all 30 trees in. So there was a choice or a decision that had to be made to be able to fit some in. So even to your point, we looked at trees that would be a risk. So there's more than just those two trees that you mentioned that would be a risk. So could we change the list and say, all right, instead of taking this one tree, we'll take these two? We're definitely up for that option. It's not concrete. Nothing has been set in stone. So we can definitely select a different tree. The biggest question would be trying to operate within that 25,000. So let's just say we changed that one tree, and now we're selecting these two. Those two trees are now going to push maybe four trees out. So while we're able to get the one at Ditmar, if we push those bigger trees in, we might have to take two trees off the list from somewhere else. So we're definitely open to it. I mean, that's your direction to tell me what to do, and I would have no problem making a change.
Well, I don't know. I'm not saying that, I'm not looking to take other trees from other parks off if they're, if they deserve to be removed as well. My concern is if you don't take them off at Ditmar in this first round of emergency tree removal, based on your presentation, are we waiting to 2026 for them to be removed?
Year two. Unless, the only other option that I think that you could do, and if Mr. Rice, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the same way that we did the 25,000 this year, would we be able to do that in next calendar year for you to approve another 25,000? As a question, I'm not sure.
Well, any project that's 25, more, are you talking about more than 25,000?
No, just another to be able to take down those trees.
Yeah, if there's a, if it's a schedule, you know, based on the hazardous nature of the trees, we can, we can do that, you know, on a rolling basis.
So that might be a solution. Because also, even though I'm not asking for this now, it would be a different meeting. This is just a presentation. How we plan on packaging this is one bid. So all three years, one contractor takes care of all of these things, but he has to operate within that three-year time span. So if we would be able to take trees off and say, we're going to operate under that 25,000 again and get more hazards taken care of?
No, thanks, Ricky. I appreciate that. So John, from our, or Bob, from our insurer's perspective, what type of liability or what type of, what type of position do we put ourselves in that we've put the two stripes on the tree? And those two stripes, we're telling the community that they're in some state of decline and that they need to be removed, but we could keep them up there for one and possibly two years?
Our insurer, yeah, our insurer covers us in either situation. The coverage extends whether the tree's been identified or not. So should there be an incident or something happens, we are covered. The fact that it's marked and we're aware of it, and it's on a schedule to be removed, and we're addressing it, only it bodes well for the township. So we are taking some action. There's a plan, and the coverage is in place in either scenario.
It's got to be done, you know, within some budgetary numbers, too. You can't, you know, the, we've had some issues with trees in the park in the past years ago, and the carrier has given the township some guidance on that. We're always going to be sued, whether it's our fault or not, if it's in a public right-of-way or if it's in a public park, but I don't see that there's any extra liability here.
Okay. Okay. And Ricky, would your answer be the same for Odoricio Park if you have a tree identified to be removed versus another tree that has two marks on it that has to come down at some point? The reason for its removal, both trees have to be removed, but due to budgetary issues, you know, that tree was chosen. And if it was, if we were to take another tree from the park, it would cause some tree from a different park to be taken off the list?
Out of the emergency list, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Nope, I appreciate it.
But the one thing I do want to make perfectly clear is these, all these 270 trees were deemed hazardous. So even though we are trying to pick the worst of the worst, if you will, they're all hazardous. So it's kind of hard to say this one's worse than that. So that's why we tried to select trees that were in areas that could potentially be more harmful.
No, I just, you know, I get it. I just hate, I hate walking around the park, seeing the slashes on the trees, but then seeing a family sit on the bench right below them.
I understand.
Okay. I just might have to hate that for a year.
I understand.
Wouldn't we, wouldn't we put some sort of warning, like, maybe don't use that bench? I mean, I'm serious. No, really, we should. If we're, if we know it's hazardous and it's not going to get attended to for two years, there should be some warning. Don't use that bench. Don't use that picnic table. That seems to be the responsible thing to do and alleviate your concern about, we know it's a problem, but we didn't, didn't take it down. And then someone gets hurt.
Mr. Rice. Mr. Rice, I believe on the trail, you had me remove that bench during that fatality, correct?
Yes.
So I think it'd be a good idea maybe to move the bench.
I'm sorry. Repeat that?
It'd be a good idea if we probably moved the bench.
Move the bench, move the picnic table, whatever it is.
You'd have to move a lot of things in the park. There's several trees that are marked.
Hi, Mr. Foster. Could you go to the slide that had the price that it, for the, when the township, the Public Works people take it down, and then it's, there we go. So of the five, those five Parks Department ones, are they emergency trees?
Yes.
Okay. So that comes out to 350, or no, am I wrong? No, less, per tree. But more than 2,000 per tree by the contractor. So what's the difference in the trees? Is it much more, the others 11 are a big deal, or what?
The contractors are bigger.
What, I'm sorry.
They're bigger trees.
They're bigger trees.
Bigger diameter. So the trees that we could take after going around with the park supervisor, and it was both of us there. He's been in the Parks Department for 20 years. I've been in the Parks Department for 20 years. We are fully aware and capable of what safely staff should be doing. So that's what we felt comfortable with, them being able to take. And the others were not even a consideration. I mean, there were a couple of trees where I felt differently and he felt differently, but it's about protecting also the workers.
Sure. So is it an equipment issue, or it's an equipment and a skill issue?
Yeah, if we had a tree crew, then they would be able to take down all of these trees theirself.
But do we have the equipment to do it, you know, the bucket trucks, whatever it is?
We do have a chipper, and we have a chipper truck that we use. We also have a lift, but it's not what a tree contractor would have. Like, our stuff is a smaller operation.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? No? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll get started with the main part of our meeting now. First is public participation. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak, come on up. Give us your name and your street.
Ian, I-
And you have five minutes.
Sorry. I just, I don't know how to get, so I actually, so while I'm-
Ian will hear you.
So, Marla Neeson, 230 Windermere Avenue, also here as a resident and with the Radnor Conservancy. Thank you. Sorry. Great. So some comments to make, given what Ricky talked about, and also my, our comments at the Shade Tree Commission. And also had a great conversation with Ricky, where I got some additional ideas of things where to make specific requests of the Board of Commissioners. Sorry, I'm feeling a little nervous here. Okay, so the first request is Ricky mentioned, confirmed that the tree assessment was presented to Shade Tree on May 22nd. The only thing is, at least my understanding was, there wasn't any vote on the actual report. It was presented. There was a lot of discussion. So I guess, one is to, is asking for clarification that this is actually still a draft document that is open for public comment, as opposed to that it's already an approved document on that. We're not disagreeing with the report. There's a couple of little caveats, but it's not like we're saying throw out the report or there's anything terrible about it. It's just more that it's still an in-process document. One of those things while we're making the request, and once again, was my understanding is that we needed to make this request of the Board of Commissioners as opposed to Shade Tree, because we did discuss this on May 22nd, was particularly with the heritage trees. And I, of those 255 or 270 now, there were 99 that classified as heritage. You take out the ash trees, and you take out the ones that are already marked for pruning, and you're down to 24 that are for removal. Now, the, when Mr. Hosbeck did the assessment, it was during the wintertime when the trees are in a dormant state. And while you can do a lot of assessments when a tree is in the dormant state, to see the tree canopy, the condition of the leaves, you kind of need the leaves. So the request of the Board of Commissioners is that there could be a reexamination of just those 24 that are marked for full removal versus pruning. Because you, for instance, like the number one tree in Odoricio Park is marked for removal when a visual assessment would say you could remove or mitigate the liability risk with pruning. That would also be cheaper. As a conservancy, we would love to be able to walk that with Mr. Hosbeck on that. Relative to the bidding, just very briefly, I actually, with the Deputy Perimeter Commissioner of City of Philadelphia, seven years, lots of bidding experience, testifying before city council, budgeting, I fully understand all that. It's very complicated. But would also suggest that there's no reason to wait for the bidding. You could actually start, you could prepare the bid and issue it now so that as hazardous trees occur, and particularly since you already know we have these 270 on the report, we could maybe, there may be a possibility to redirect the 300,000 approximately that's already being spent every year by the township for hazardous tree removal, and instead direct it to this. So it doesn't have to be one or the other. And I'm just, the thought was, if you do the bidding now, you have actual numbers to establish the budgets, you know, based on actual numbers. And so it could be a win-win there also financially, planning, et cetera. And then, once again, if, in going to a competitive bid with competition, hopefully we'll see some savings and maybe, once again, instead of 300,000 going to, just coming out of our budget every year for hazardous trees, maybe some of that could go towards maintenance, thus reducing risk. And the reason, so just because pictures are a thousand words. So this is tree number one, which is slated for removal, and I believe also slated for removal on this emergency tree. On, based on a visual inspection, which is what a Level 1 tracks inspection is, it doesn't appear to be in a condition of imminent failure. Once again, not questioning it being on the list, but maybe, maybe we could prune it instead of removing it, and that would also eliminate the risk. This is part of the public conversation on the report. And I just want to emphasize again, not questioning the accuracy, not questioning of that, but also these trees were assessed when they weren't in this foliage state. As a, and one of the reasons where maybe relative to the orientation of removal versus pruning, this is tree number 27 in Odoricio Park. It is a, it has three very large branches. It overhangs the road. It's close to the basketball court. And you can see in these pictures, the three large branches, the condition of the tree. Once again, from a visual inspection, this tree would appear to be at a higher risk. Sorry, and that's it. Fortunately, that's my last slide. So, so thank you for your time and for your consideration. Oh, no, not my computer.
Thank you very much for your input, Tom. And I think you should feel free to share with Shade Tree, as you obviously have been, and with Mr. Foster as well. So, all right. Any further public participation this evening?
Hi, Paul Vernici, 470 Glen Mary Lane. Yeah, I, it seems like that's just a huge number, 270 trees. And it's based on one study, from what I understand. It'd be great, in light of the things pointed out by the- It'd be great, in light of the things pointed out by the Radnor Conservancy, if we could maybe just take a deeper look into it before we confirm that all 270 of these trees should come down for safety reasons. Maybe just like a walkthrough, as Marla suggested, or maybe a second opinion from a second company, if that's gonna take maybe, just like an audit, you know, a handful of randomly selected tree determinations. If we could just have them audited by a second party might be helpful. In light of the fact that we're going to spend several hundred thousand dollars, it looks like to cut down these trees, I'd imagine spending an extra couple hundred or thousand dollars to get a couple of these trees looked at as a second opinion would be the prudent thing to do, both from the standpoint of conserving our tree canopy and also saving our township some money. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Higgins, 102 Loella Avenue. Very, simple comment. I, I agree with Paul Vernici. I think you need a second opinion. This is a very high number, and one of the great attributes of this township is its trees, its tree canopy. The example I'll cite in support of that is that when the Fenimore Woods project was first announced, the recommendation of taking trees down was 148 trees. Which, those of us that use the park, and our children and grandchildren use it, disagree with that. And I think that number has come down a lot. So, that's my point. Get another opinion. We have an arborist, we need another opinion. Thank you.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. With respect to Emlyn Tenell. Walk that park every day, it's highly used. I have asked the question before and did not get an answer that I thought was valid. The bulk of the trees that are marked for pruning or removal are on Radnor House property. The trunks are on the other side of the fence. That's, those are to the east. To the north is, again, Radnor House, and then is the Carriage House, which is a separate entity. I think at a minimum, Radnor should be talking to these other legal entities where the trees are on their property to come, so at least they have, have some input and some knowledge of what's, what has been proposed by the arborist. I feel that very strongly. It's interesting, there are trees that are on the Septa property, which are those, they're along the fence on the south side. Nothing has been marked on the Septa property. So I think it needs to have further look. And I'm very disappointed that my commissioner is not there. I've asked him to walk the park, and I don't get, oh yeah, sometime, but I don't get an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? All right. Seeing none, there'll be a chance later on under every topic, so.
Maggie, here's some other public-
Thank you. And a very welcome one at that.
Good evening, my name's Tony McCone, I live on Papa Rabbit in Wayne. And we've been here quite a while. I live very close to Fenimore Woods, and I think it's extremely important that we preserve as much of the, of the canopy over, not only Fenimore Woods, but over the township as a whole. I'm very concerned when we talk about taking down trees, especially trees that have been there for a very long time. So, I would urge you to, to exercise as much restraint as possible in terms of removing trees or pruning them, so that we, we maintain the tree canopy. Because part of the thing that makes Fenimore Woods so desirable is the fact that it has a natural, a natural canopy effect, basically a natural umbrella. And that's, that's one of the things which makes it so desirable. Makes the entire community, not just around Fenimore Woods, but all of that area of the township. And it's really important we preserve that in just about any way we can. So, a lot of people move to Radnor and to places like this because it has that natural, that natural umbrella effect, if you will, over the whole thing. And I think it's very important that we maintain that if at all possible. Okay? Thank you very, very much. I live on Papa Avenue, 216 Papa Avenue in Wayne, just to get that.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any commissioner or member of the public would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Could I have a motion to pass the consent agenda? And a second? Second by Commissioner Agnew. All in favor? Aye? Unanimous. All right. We'll move on to the business agenda. The first thing to note is we have two appointments to boards and commissions within the township. First is for the Radnor Memorial Library Board. We have Feiji Brennan for a term from 6/1/24 to 12/31/2026. And for the Planning Commission, we have Joe Dow for a term of six, to, to complete a term that runs from 6/17/24 to 12/31/24. Could I have a motion for those two, please? And a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Any public participation? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye? Unanimous. Item B is a caucus item. It's a preliminary final land development plan for 786 Church Road, otherwise fondly known as Chanticleer. It's a lot consolidation. Do we have some representatives from Chanticleer here? Wonderful.
Commissioner, I'd just like to add-
Ah, Mr. Norrisini.
Madam President, that Chanticleer themselves, reps could not be here, but their engineer is. And we strongly recommend this project for preliminary final. It is literally just changing lines on a piece of paper.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Mattson. I'm with SHOT Group. We're the engineering company that put together the, the plan. As was just mentioned, the plan is to consolidate the three existing part, separate parcels into one combined property. And that, I mean, that that is the, that is the plan.
Sounds simple enough. And there are little parcels to start. All right. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, absolutely. Any Commissioner comment?
Thank you. If you could just explain the benefit of consolidation for this project, this, or for Chanticleer.
All right, yes, it's just to simplify the property. Instead of keeping it as three separate parcels, they just want to simplify the property and merge it all into one combined, one combined property.
So is it about, you know, sort of one tax bill? Or is it about management of the property? I guess I'm not quite clear what the, what the impetus for this is.
It's just for their, it's just for simplifying their records to only have one property instead of having to, you know, review three separate parcels.
Commissioner, if I may, in speaking to Chanticleer, they also said this would help them in obtaining grants, as it would be one parcel, as opposed to trying to explain how it's the trust of this parcel and the trust of that parcel. And Mr. Mattson, do you have just a quick sketch you can throw up of, of the, just to give the commissioners a idea of what it looks like?
Yeah, I mean, I have a hard copy of a plan.
You could put that there, and Ian will just lay it on the table, and they can at least see what you're talking about.
All right, so, I mean, as you can see, the, the main parcel A is roughly 35 acres, which is the bulk of the property. There are, you know, two separate parcels, parcel C and parcel B. Those are the two parcels that are proposed to be combined with the overall property.
But no, no intended change to the use in the gardens and?
No change to the use, no proposed development.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you at a future meeting.
All right, thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve alternate work hours for Radnor High School re-roofing project. All right, who wants to start us out on this one?
Good evening. My name is Kyle Fales. I'm here on behalf of Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated. Alongside I have my trade partner, John Besch with David Mainz.
Good evening.
And we have Ken Morris here with the school district as well.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Morris. I'm director of Buildings and Grounds for Radnor Township School District, and I'm here to support Weatherproofing Technologies and Mainz Roofing for our Radnor High School roof replacement. Thank you.
So we just, we received the approval for permits for the project. We are on site and ready to get started with the more labor-intensive work. So we are proposing to start the daily construction at 3:00 AM. We have the summer until the kids get back mid-August-
August 26th.
August 26th. When the teachers return, and we would like to get the majority of our more intrusive work with tearing off the roof and getting back everything before it gets occupied again, just for safety reasons. We would also like to allow the workers on site to beat the heat, as tearing off a roof is very labor-intensive. Is there anything you want to add about?
I'm the actual roofing contractor. Good evening. I got all kinds of data. I mean, we're a fairly large company. You know, heat is our biggest nemesis. Most of my injuries, so per se, are from, you know, heat exhaustion and things like that. This week alone, I've reduced the hours of our company. We're basically on nine-hour, nine-hour shifts due, you know, due to the heat. What we typically like to do is get in early, try to get the removal done. I got about 806 squares to get done for the Radnor High School. It's a very labor-intensive project. I'm going to have from anywhere from 16 to 20 guys working there. You know, weather plays an impact. We're tearing the old roof off, putting a new roof on. Anything that we can do, or I can do, you know, for the safety of my guys, I try to do. I mean, safety's number one for our company. You know, then, of course, with the heat. Every day this week is going to continue to get hotter. So, you know, but the project has to be done before the kids come back to school, so it's imperative that, you know, I use every effort I can to, you know, one, keep my workers safe and, you know, keep the morale up, of course, with the guys, and, you know, dealing what we're dealing with here in the next couple of weeks with, you know, with the heat approaching. Kyle actually did a, did a circle. There's not any, I don't know if you want to throw that up or talk about that a little bit? We'll make it short.
Yeah, so we're looking at the, the closest residence is about 1,000 feet from the school. I don't know where that is, across the street there.
Radnor Chester.
Radnor Chester.
Most, most of what we'll be doing in the early morning would be the removal. You know, we, of course, we have lights on the roof. Lights, there'll be lights. As far as the noise, it'd be very, the noise will basically just mainly be the workers on the roof. Probably from then till, probably the removal will take us probably anywhere from three to five hours, depending on the section of roof that we're on. So that's kind of one of the biggest, you know, the biggest and the hardest process of our day. So anything that we can do, like I said, to get started earlier, that's what we try to do.
And how long or how late in the day do you expect to go?
What we try to do is, we'll probably try to do like till noon, probably like noon in the afternoon. We'll try to, anywhere from a 10 to 12 hour day, depending on the conditions of the day and what we're into. And, you know, one thing we got to do is get it dry before we leave for the end of the day, so.
Any Commissioner comment, questions?
I do have a question. Can you describe for us, I know you've pointed out that the residents are over 1,000 feet away, but can you describe for us any noise that is part of a project like this?
Mainly, the biggest thing that probably on our end is our forklift. We'll have a forklift on the ground, and what we typically do is, we disconnect the backup beeper till, you know, it's just kind of standard protocol. We do this quite a bit. And we get into, you know, some residentialers and things like that for, you know, mainly schoolwork. But typically, we, we'll disconnect the beeper, I'll have a guy on the ground, which will be running a lift. We'll disconnect that, you know, till probably 7, 8 o'clock, and then basically plug that back in. But that's probably the most noise, besides from the guys being on the roof, which, the nice thing with the school there, it is kind of out of the way. You know, it kind of sits back, and with, with road traffic and things like that, I just don't really see it being a problem, personally.
Okay. We all know roofers love their music, so.
Not a stat time in the morning we don't.
Okay, I'm just saying. All the roofers, I, like, they have their boombox right there. And I, you know, I, sometimes I like it, sometimes I don't.
I don't, from a commercial standpoint, from what I do, we're not your, we're a little, I guess we could say we're a little different. I mean, we do a lot of state and federal work and things like that, so it's, you know, roofers sometimes get a bad perception of what they really are. You know, I have a little-
I, I don't mind. I'm just saying, but at 3:00 in the morning-
But, yeah, I mean, we, we, my guys kind of know that their livelihood kind of depends on this also. So anything that comes Ken's way, comes my way. So we do everything possible to try to make it work.
So this is removal?
Yes, yes, we're tearing the old roof off.
Is the machinery used that makes a lot of noise when you do that, on a commercial kind of roof?
Not, not too much. Like I said, the forklift is probably the biggest thing that'll be running. Lot of it's, lot of it's handwork, it's just manual labor.
And if it does become a problem, should they turn to?
Basically, see Ken, and we'll have to adjust accordingly.
You're Ken? Okay, Ken.
I don't feel it will be, though.
Oh, all right.
I appreciate your candid comments, but for safety reasons, are you supposed to disconnect the backup beeper?
Well, I know you were going to ask. You know, I only have that, that's the only individual on the ground. I mean, that's basically, you know, what that does. But that isn't running constantly, but that is just a timeframe. I mean, I'll be honest, it's what we kind of feel we need to do. One little thing compared to the overall, starting at 7 or 8 o'clock. But, I mean, I'd be more than happy to let it plugged in.
Well, I'm just saying, like, we're going to vote on this. Regardless of how I vote, I'm not supporting you disconnecting the backup beeper.
Okay, well, then I'll let it in. I'm all for that. I just didn't want to, I mean, you were asking what would be the most intrusive as far as noise. That is the most intrusive thing.
You'll have big lights up, right?
Yep.
And what's the, what'd it be called?
The can-
The canopy of the light?
The light, just mainly where, mainly where we're working on that section of roof.
So it doesn't go over to the neighbors?
No, no, no. I mean, it's not, it's not anything power, it's just basically the, you know, it's just light towers. Nothing, nothing motorized as far as lights. It's just your standard, you know, halogen light towers.
So we, we vote tonight, they'll start work. If neighbors come in and say, you know, it is loud, are, we will have that back on the agenda? Okay?
Well, we'll certainly run it by the school district and put it back on the agenda as it needs to be, yeah. I, I actually agree with Commissioner Abel. I think OSHA would have a fit if you took the backup beep. As much as I feel sorry for the neighbors, I just don't think that that's a reasonable solution.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate your trying to be good to us, but I, I don't want anybody to get run over by the forklift.
I think the 10th Amendment says-
Yeah, exactly. Mr. Kachansky, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I hear the concerns about the beeper and the noise concerns, and maybe some hesitancy to just grant a blanket waiver for this requirement. This board does meet back in a month. We could report back any findings, so you could maybe give a conditional, and I don't know, John, how we would be able to word this, but allow them some flexibility for the first month. If things go according to plan, then that can continue. Otherwise, you know, if we're hearing complaints and, you know, reports into the police department, then, you know, maybe possibly end it at that 30-day window or some- then, you know, maybe possibly end it at that thirty-day window or sometime before then.
What I was going to say is if there's a problem, it's likely to come up before thirty days, and I think that we will just step in and, and, you know, speak with Mr. Bachelor, speak with you,
Absolutely, so.
And come to a resolution before that. I worry if we, I, I think that in thirty days at the next meeting, if there's a problem, we can put it on the agenda and make it an issue then. Otherwise, I think we may need to act earlier than that, so I, I don't think we need to do any kind of continuing.
Okay, and, and this is one of many roofing projects that I've done in my career, and four or five with, with Mainz. They are, they are exceptional. And given the working relationship between the, the school district and the township, I would hope that any complaints for this project, please bring them to me. I would really like the opportunity to resolve them right off the bat and, and work together.
Make sure Mr. Kachansky has your phone number. Thank you so much. All right, I realize I never got a motion for this. Could I get a motion? And a second. All right. Any other commissioner question or comment? All right, we'll move on to public participation.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the public have anything to add to this? All right, I'll call a vote. All in favor? Good luck with your project.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Yes.
Thank you for your support.
All right, item D is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh-five, adoption. It's an ordinance of Radnor Township Delaware County, Pennsylvania, approving a cable franchise agreement for a five-year term between Radnor Township and Verizon Pennsylvania LLC. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you, Commissioner Riley, and a second. All right, Mr. Tate, you want to start us off on this one?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This ordinance was introduced on your meeting of May thirteenth. This culminates a long series of negotiations between the township and Verizon, as facilitated with the Cohen Law Group. As part of the agenda, there is an extensive executive summary that details a lot of the information contained in this contract, in this ordinance. Essentially a five-year agreement. The gross revenue to the township remains the same at the five percent of the total gross receipts. The specific line items are enumerated in the contract and in the summary, and on your agenda tonight for final adoption.
Thank you. All right, could I get a motion on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero-four? Thank you, Mr. Riley, and a second. Thank you. Any commissioner questions, comments? Seeing none? Any public question, comment? Seeing none. I will call a vote. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous with Commissioner Mulrooney off the podium. Item F is resolution twenty twenty-four dash seven-five, authorizing Siler Drury Architecture to provide a final design and scope of work, construction bid development, administrative and professional services, and the township's subsequent bid for the rehabilitation of the Fenimore Woods stable into park bathrooms as a part of the Fenimore Woods Improvement Project at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand, three hundred dollars. May I have a motion, please? Motion? Thank you, Commissioner Riley, and a second.
Excuse me, Madam. We, we jumped over item E, which we can certainly come back to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you want to continue with Siler Drury.
Oh, thank you very much. Sorry.
Sure.
That was my fault. And I got a second? We're doing F right now, because I skipped D, sorry. And we have a second by Commissioner Agnew. All right, Director Cohen.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tammy Cohen, Director of Parks and Recreation. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm really excited to be back here and talking about Fenimore. It's been a year. We, we last looked at this in March of twenty twenty-three, so we're a little over a year. We had a presentation on the stable rehabilitation during that presentation and during that meeting, where we discussed the rehabilitation of the stable at the site into bathrooms, into a storage area. And I know there were some concerns that were engaged by the board, some questions, of course, in terms of the methodology, and some of the cost estimates that came as a result of that presentation, which caused us to look and take a second opinion, seems to be the words of the night, and do a look to see how we could refine the work that was done by the previous then consultant and architect that reviewed the building, and see if we could come up with something that is a little more cost-effective, a little bit more refined in terms of the scope of the work in the building. So I'm going to go through a lot of details about the project tonight. I would like to kind of finish the presentation first, and then we'll get involved in a lot of questions, of course, I'm sure. So I, I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Board. They put a lot of time into this project. Since twenty sixteen, we've been working on this. We actually have a member that was with us in two thousand and eight, and he got to see components of this project in the capital plan. So this is, this is something we've been discussing for a while. In fact, some of the improvements during my entire tenure, you know, we've been discussing these, and they've been floating in the capital plan. So we'll get to a little bit of those in a minute. I also want to thank the Fenimore Woods Coalition, which is a group that I know we've heard a little bit from. Some members are here tonight that have come out in response to the project in terms of its first iteration, when we were talking about some tree removals, and really helped us change direction and see the, the project from a different scope. And then all the members of the public that, that have reached out. We have a running list of two-hundred-plus people that receive notifications and updates from me on the project, and of course, our commissioners for the time that they've dedicated to this project. So I want to thank everybody. It's been a long road, and I feel like we're getting there. So Fenimore Woods, every park, I could talk about the wonderful things that are, you know, have the special features of every single park. I truly am passionate about each and every one of them, but Fenimore is really special. Not only does it, you know, consist of twelve acres of space, a lot of wooded tree canopy. There's two points of ingress egress, borders two major universities and residence. It's walkable to Wayne, should you venture to do so, even though there's some limitations to sidewalks. It really has a lot of features. There's active features, passive features. It's a destination. It's a way to immerse into nature and truly immerse into nature. Two-point-two acre pond, the Gulf Creek runs through it. There's really just so much that it has to offer. So taking a step in looking at the project tonight, I just really want to say that I think Fenimore's best days are really ahead of it. Truly believe that, and I know a lot of people feel the same energy and passion that I do. So tonight, what we're looking at and what you're looking at in terms of the legislation in front of you is resolution twenty twenty-four seventy-five, essentially authorizing Siler Drury, who has been engaged on this project, to take that second look and that refined look at the stable in terms of developing a final design, scope of work, construction bid development, administrative professional services related to the project, essentially carrying it to the finish line, should we go to construction. So I just want to make it clear, tonight is not a vote to construct and rehabilitate the Fenimore Woods stable. This is to basically take the next, next step forward to get this so it's ready to bid. So essentially, their work is going to be getting us into that situation where we can bid the project and see what it costs, and hopefully is definitely within the numbers and everything that have been factored to get the project moving. It also comes with the premise that the township staff and the township departments, essentially the engineering department, public works department, of course, the Parks and Recreation Department, are going to take on all of the other pieces of work that go along with this project. So whereas when you looked at it last March, we were talking about Gilmore and Associates overseeing all the rest of the comprehensive improvements that are tied to the project in addition to the stable. So now the township staff are going to be managing those, and I'm going to step through those in a minute. So essentially, tonight, again, not an award for stable construction. There's going to be a lot of checkpoints and a lot of milestones along the way as we go forward. So should we get to the point where we do have a ward, we have some other checks and balances along the way. For instance, you know, we'll be coming back to you to potentially authorize purchase of the state, of the, the pavilion, the installation of the pavilion, the paving construction that would go towards some of the new work on the parking lots, and of course, park furnishing signage, things like those that all exceed that seventy-five-hundred-dollar price limit. Those we'll be back to you with, so we have a bit of a haul to go here, but still, this is really a big point in moving forward. And then essentially tonight, we're going to take a look at all the costs that are being factored in. So this, this project was part of a general obligation bond from twenty fifteen, so it goes back quite a while. This was a monumental bond. In the world of parks and recreation, this included several trails and, and park projects. Clemente Crone, O'Connor, Warren Philipone, Anki. There were a lot of projects that were in this, in this bond, and of course, Fenimore. And essentially, what this was is to improve the aging infrastructure within those park sites. This is not for maintenance. These are for twenty-five-plus-year lifeline-type items, aging infrastructure, things like the pavilion, things like a bathroom facility, parking lots and all of that. Just to do a little bit of a recap, because I know we've gotten a lot of questions about, can we spend this on tree replenishment? Can we spend it on maintenance? So even though if some of those projects are ancillary to the project, de minimis to the project, we certainly can, but definitely not the substance of the project. So just a slight recap, we've had a lot of meetings since twenty sixteen. We started in September of twenty sixteen with the Parks and Recreation Board, where we looked at the initial plan. We, of course, discussed it every, every month basically thereafter, when we had meetings and had quorums. And essentially, it made its way back to the Board of Commissioners, where we, we took a moment to pause on the project, because we knew there were tree removals that were part of the first iteration, and we did a reset, went back to Parks and Recreation Board, spent many months with some really great conversations with members of the public. Again, Fenimore Woods Coalition in high participation in many of those meetings, and expressing significant goals with regards to tree removals. In September twenty twenty-two, there were some goals and objectives, and a motion that was passed by the Parks and Recreation Board, and then that's what led us kind of back to the commissioners in, in March of twenty twenty-three. We looked at the stable in one iteration. We then came back in November of twenty twenty-three. We authorized Siler Drury then, of course, to start their work, and that's what's bringing us to where we are today. There were also some legalities of the project that were looked at. Could we do design build, because could we be creative? Could we do different things to save money? So a lot of things were really looked at during that time. So the goals of the Parks and Recreation Board were essential to this in terms of how we move forward. This, again, you know, was in September of twenty twenty-two. The number-one thing on the list was, no matter what we do, no tree removals to healthy trees. I know we, when we discussed with the Board of Commissioners in June of twenty twenty-one, we did talk about tree removals and hazardous tree removals, and did agree that if those were deemed hazardous, they would come down, and, you know, obviously, they would be on a different schedule, different sort of budget-type avenue. So no tree removals as part of the project was number one. Number two was to preserve and renovate the stable as bathrooms and storage, as it currently is now, but it obviously is a deteriorated building. We had to close it down, so it's no longer used. It's not compliant, et cetera. So the stable building was deemed important to be renovated. We talked about a lot of different iterations of what that could look like. Could it be ruins? Could it be a facade of leaving behind walls and pieces of the building? But where, the, the charge we went with was moving forward to renovate the building. Renovate and, or fix the pavilion, which we know is a full replacement, which we'll get into looking at some of those pieces soon. The playground was another item there, and then, of course, the ADA and the accessibility was critical. And really, at the end of the day, I know it's not captured in these goals and objectives, but it was really to take as minimal approach to the building, to the, the park as possible in terms of adding new buildings, things like that were a no. Like in-kind replacement, trying to do as little as possible to renovate the park. So throughout my tenure, it's been exciting to see so many wonderful things happen at the park. I'm just going to buzz through a couple of these pictures. These are recent pictures. We know there was a project that Steve Norsini oversaw, Shimonie Road with the culvert and the weirre replacement, and there's a lot of improvements that have been made in that area that have made a significant impact already on the park that we've seen. In fact, when we were talking about the Shimonie Road culvert replacement, we thought the project for the park would be long done, and, or there would be an overlap, and here we are, still working through the, the project to get it completed and over the finish line. And the Shimonie Road culvert, of course, is long done as a project. The formal rentals at the park are significant. We average about forty to fifty per each of the different parties that are there. It's a very busy season for us right now. I know we still have a lot of the pavilion rentals coming in, but it's a busy space. I mean, we sometimes have groups there up to two-hundred-and-fifty that are actually using the space for a number of different parties and business groups, institutions, things like that. So just a little bit of an overview. So the Parks, the staff, township departments, including the Parks and Rec Department, the Public Works Department, and the Engineering Department, are going to take on many of the improvements in the area you see here in yellow. This was previously, again, what Gilmore and Associates was overseeing. And then, of course, Siler Drury, who were proposing at this point to continue working through the development of the stable, you know, given their professional credibility and credentials to that project, we feel is still essential. We have a sanitary line that, sewer line that runs from Eagle Road right off of what is now Villanova University. It cuts through the park, runs under the little stone bridge there at the bottom of the park. That's going to be renovated at some point by our engineering department. I know they're working through that in-house. Different bucket of money will come out of the Stormwater Fund. Shimonie Road culvert, obviously, took place out of the Stormwater Fund. That project's been completed, so we're not talking about that area. That's now out of the way. And then, of course, the pond. The pond initially, in twenty fifteen, when we had the borrowing, I know there was a lot of hope that pond dredging, eration, lots of creative things to help the pond, and the pond help would be included within that. But I think we quickly learned that due to so many studies that were needed and permitting and the excessive costs, it just was not going to fit within the money that was allotted for this project. So even though we're going to try to get some things done around the pond, like replacing some of the benches and the trash cans and the fencing, the pond itself, the pond proper, will not be changed in any way at this point, although we, we know that there have been some positive impacts as a result of the Shimonie Road culvert replacement with the valve being restored relative to that project. The playground is also another feature that's not going to be included within this, in this scenario that I'm presented, presenting. And it really comes down to, you know, there's, there's a finite amount of money that's left for this project. There has not been an appetite, appetite to add more money to this project at the current time. So just like the pond, the playground is going to end up being in the future. You'll see that in capital, capital budget as a separate project that'll run in a, in a different way to be funded. And again, really, it just, it comes down to cost. And I know there's some interest there to do some creative things with regards to the playground. It also sits on a two-to-eighteen percent slope, so there's a significant amount of regrading and changing to the area there that has to occur in order to make it a flat space in terms of restoring the, the playground ultimately. So those would all end up being outside of the project, as I had mentioned. So if we take a look in the upper part of the parking lot, the township staff is going to look at doing parking lot work in that area. There's a roadway that comes in off of Eagle, and it drives back here, as everybody, I'm sure, is familiar, and goes into the stable. Part of this is, we're going to be removing that and putting a walkway in that area. There'll be a five-foot pathway that goes back, so you'll no longer see the road. You don't see it on this image, but you'll see, see it on some upcoming. It's really an attractive nuisance. There's not one morning that I drive over there that somebody's not parked there. Hanging out, having lunch, doing whatever. So if we're going to make this a public building again for people to use as a bathroom, we do want to remove that area so folks can't drive back there any further. Definitely is a, a safety hazard. So we're looking at those spaces. So we're looking at those spaces, looking at, we're going to remove the current galvanized fence that runs along Eagle Road and Paul Road. So those will be removed. We're looking at, again, in this scenario, post and rail fence to give it the rustic look that can fit with the park. There'll be some renovations to the lower parking lot that I'll get into in a little bit more detail. Of course, the pavilion replacement. We're going to add a walkway from the lower parking lot to the playground. There's fencing that separates the residents at the southern portion of the park where the pond is. That will be replaced. We'll look at some pictures of that in a minute, as well as the fencing there that separates the eastern properties to the, to the other side, to the, I guess, the east and the south side. And then, of course, the stable rehabilitation. So again, high-level view of the, of the park there in the upper portion of the lot. The upper lot right now is really, we're not planning to change and add asphalt. So really, the changes are going to be within, under, of course, leadership of our township engineer and working with his staff to design and redesign that space just to create positive flow, reduce some of the low spots that we know are within those areas. There's, you know, just really, it's undefined right now. There's a curve that runs through the center, so it's a little difficult once you drive into that space. And then, of course, there's a lot of puddling and some grading, and we see some erosion in different areas. There's just some pictures here. In this area, we know there's some erosion that runs down. This is going to be turned into an ADA accessible, two actually, ADA accessible parking spots. And as I had mentioned before, this roadway here is going to be removed. It'll be a five-foot pathway that you'll see that will come, lead you down basically from, all the way from, it'll be a route essentially, accessible route, all the way from the stable, renovated stable. Of course, this is an older picture. It runs all the way to the pavilion and then, of course, all the way on down to the lower parking lot so that we get that connectivity that runs throughout the park. As you can see right here in this corner, we have a big ledge here that is going to come out. This area is going to be all regraded and graded down. So you'll see a lot of grass in that area. This is actually a corner looking, if you were looking towards the pond, from the corner of the parking lot. So the pavilion would be down here to your right. We have a lot of erosion. We're going to correct a lot of that. Again, once again, under the leadership of our township engineer to redesign that so that we have a rain garden swale in that area with a little bit of a riprap with more rock, you know, to catch the water that would come through the parking lot, sort of fix this up and regrade it. And essentially would, this is just a, a drawing that Siler Jury had prepared for us just to kind of capture a little bit of what I'm talking about on this side. So you'll see coming off the two ADA handicap parking spots, this will be crushed stone where you see the brown. It'll connect to the lower lot. There'll be approximately a 10-foot driveway that'll go down to the pavilion with about a 20 by 10 spot that someone can pull in, drop off, drop someone off or drop off things that they have for a picnic or a party that's going on. We thought we would put a nice rustic, just maybe 10-foot run of post and rail fence in this area. We could give someone a key to access that space who's renting it and wants to access to drop off. We get those kinds of requests a lot in other parks. And so doing it here could help, you know, keep that control, because we'll talk about in a minute. I don't, we want to cut this off from being like the driveway that it is today. Again, the pavilion is another area where cars are camped out all the time, and we want to cut off some of that access. And then here in the corner, you see where the, the swale is. The pavilion, significant issues with the pavilion. You know, it's, it's nearly 40 years old. In fact, where I don't even think we've been able to pinpoint that exact timeframe. We know it was late 1980s, 1990, I guess, when it was installed. We have a significant amount of moss and weeds that are growing on the top of the roof. In fact, if you look at an aerial, you can't even find it. Rotted timber truss. We have rotted posts that are immersed in water that has collected around each of the posts that hold it up, cracked and uneven pavement throughout the surface. And at this point, you know, looking to definitely renovate that. So here's some of the close-up pictures. I know Public Works has done a good job to try to keep it hanging on for as long as they can, but it's getting harder and harder. You can see some of those posts where they're rotted, where they're embedded into the ground. And then, of course, we've got an old water fountain there, which most of the time really isn't even working that well. So we're going to look to replace that as well as part of this. Conceptually, these are a couple, few of the options that are there. One, in one of them, you do see a shingled roof. We would like to move to a steel metal roof. That's going to help because we do have an area that's shaded relatively most of the time because of the trees that are, that are encompassed in that area. There's a lot of moisture, not a lot of sunlight, so it'll make it easier to maintain in the long run. Ideally, it would be great to have a full steel structure in that area. In, in fact, that's what would be recommended, just again, given the lack of shade, I'm sorry, the lack of sunlight and all the shade and moisture that is collected in that area. But right now, for the purposes of the way we've worked this budget, this is, this is probably where we would land in a, in a solid scenario. If we find that bids come in cheaper for the stable, then, you know, we can look to do some more creative things in these areas. But essentially, with regards to the pavilion, we're trying to save some of those costs too, again, with Public Works working to do a lot of the demo. So similar to the upper parking lot, they're going to assist with a lot of the removal of the asphalt. We're going to have them remove the concrete pad. They're going to remove the, the posts, the timber, all of that and bring that out and grade that site. And then, of course, under the, the guise of the installer, they will come in and put everything else together. And we're looking to make that a co-star's purchase, which will be a savings there. So again, having, you know, going to the scenario of us now managing it, you know, we can do a lot of those creative things to try and save money to get this project over the finish line. So just looking at the lower parking lot, this is a high-level view looking down, coming in off of Paul Road. And we know that, you know, driving in in this area, sort of a patchwork of low spots, there's some broken asphalt. We've got a lot of bumpers that are sort of a little disorganized. We're going to try and clean those up and change that. We're going to add ADA accessible spot to this lower portion that will obviously connect to the playground and then into the upper portion of the park. There's going to be restoning that's going to go on in this area of the crushed stone, typical of what you would see at, like Dipmar, for instance, like you see now. But we're going to, we're going to really fill it in and restone it, reroll it. Again, this is work that our Public Works Department is going to be doing under their skill, of course, and their professionalism. We see these, we see them do these things in a lot of our parks now and again, trying to get this project over the finish line. We have a lot of erosion that's going on around this area. So you'll, you'll see in a later picture. Fencing replacement, again, this fence that you see, the galvanized that's here that runs along Paul and then on down to Shimonie, that will be replaced with post and rail fencing to give it, you know, again, another, it'll still keep the park in clothes, but a nice rustic look to the park. And our guys will be doing that installation. And in fact, they just added 500 feet of post and rail fence to Dipmar Park. They did an amazing job. So we know that they, that definitely within their wheelhouse. So again, that's some of the fencing too that will be replaced there along Paul Road and the, and the playground. So this was the area I just noted where we have some erosion. We have stone that's coming down here. We're going to pull out all this stone, turn this back to grass. Again, all work Public Works is going to be doing, not a contractor in this regard. We will have a paving contractor on the upper parking lot, but all the rest of the work will be done in-house on that. And that's just another view looking up towards the bridge where this will actually turn to a pathway, so you'll no longer be able to drive up into that area. The mulch bin is going to be replaced. We're looking at doing something similar to what we have at Philipone and at Emlyn Townell. This is just an example from Emlyn Townell, using the verti blocks and making it a little bit more organized down in that area. I met with John Hosbeck. We talked about some potential plantings we can do. We do want to start the process of, you know, replenishing the tree plant, the, the tree canopy within this park. That's been an important mission all along. Even if we go back to the initial iterations of the plan, adding trees and starting that process is important. We know we have some residents that are interested in doing perennial plantings and wild gardens and things, wildflower gardens, things like that. So these are all potential areas. This is just the concept in some of the options that we have in trying to really beautify, bring some color, bring landscaping also to the park and start to work in filling in some of these buffer areas where we know that this type of vegetative planting and plant life can, can definitely thrive. And as we saw some of the success, of course, down off of Shimonie, under the leadership of Steve Morcini and John Hosbeck, we have the fruit-bearing trees already bearing fruit down in that area and looking to add some of that as well. So down around the pond, what you're looking at here is the fencing that needs to be replaced that essentially is on the perimeter of the residences that are along Fenimore Lane, all the way down to Eastern, and then makes a turn, of course, at the end of Eastern. That would all be replaced as well, not with black, not with post and rail fencing, but in that case, we're looking at black vinyl coated fencing potentially within there. But still looking at that relative, of course, to the budget. And I did meet with those residences, including Eastern University. So we've had some of those initial conversations. A work in progress. They know we're not running out to rip it out or any of the trees or anything like that just yet, but that once final decisions are made where we see where we can take the project, we'll have more discussion on, on exactly what we're going to do in those areas. Trash can replacements will happen throughout the park. A lot of these are rusted out and broken. Some of the benches that are around the pond, we're going to get those replaced as well and relocate where necessary. Of course, you see here where there's a lot of tree root and erosion in terms of those areas and try and add some of those additional things. This also is adjacent to the pond where you see the fencing that separates to the residences on Fenimore Lane. So there's, there's trees that are slated to come down in that area that were deemed hazardous, that of course, were presented by Mr. Foster earlier tonight. So there'll be some changes within that area too. And again, conversations all ongoing with the residents. So at the end of the day, you know, taking a look at this and the costs. So when we look at all the improvements in the upper portion of the parking lot, this is where we've come out there. So if we add all of these areas up that I just stepped through and then including the plantings, which we have an allowance there, essentially, all of this work, and this is also taking into consideration 5% on materials and, and some of the work that Public Works is doing, 15% for inspections, permitting, all of the things that go into this, they're all built into these numbers. Basically, where that brings us out is, hold on, I don't know what happened to it here, but it's, hold on a second, sorry. So for some reason, down in this, down in this little area, my text box is, for some reason, here, this is what you should be looking at. Of course, we get to the costs and I hide it, right? This is not intended to be that way. So I'm not sure. Let me try and space that down. Maybe that'll help. So there you go. That's what you were supposed to see. The $517,000. I guess I added an extra zero there. And then, of course, we're going to get into talking a little bit more about the stable and how that complements, complements the rest of the work at the park. So the stable, the stable was part and parcel with a house on the site that was raised by, that, that house was raised by the township in the 1970s when the township bought the property. I know Siler Jury here with us tonight is going to talk a little bit about the history. But the township, I know, sought a caretaker, similar to how it had at many of its buildings throughout the park system. And when it didn't land a caretaker, they raised the building and it was removed, but the stable remained and it was renovated into what would have been the 1970s version of park bathrooms. They weren't code compliant. They weren't accessible in any way. And as we've seen over the years, we, we had great use of this building. In fact, for a decade, I used the bathrooms at the site and within my tenure here. We used it as storage. It was accessible, but over the years, it deteriorated and it wasn't our capital plan for a long time. There's hazardous environmental conditions that exist within the building. Their systems within the building are compromised. It uses a current leach field cesspool system, which is something we want to get away from. And there's extensive water damage, as everybody is aware. And as I had mentioned before, the attractive nuisance feature of the driveway is definitely something that we want to look to correct. So, but this building is different than our other park bathrooms, just to keep in mind as we start to now dive into the stable a little bit deeper. It's twice the size of most of our ba, of our bathrooms, our park bathrooms in terms of square footage. It also has a large area within it that really could be used as a shelter space if we had camps and programs come back to the site. You know, we, we've actually used the, the storage over at Clement Chrome Park when, when we were having camps outdoors during COVID. We had a small shelter space. There's a bad storm, we were able to come in. So even if it's not completely finished and outfitted, it is a large space, obviously would be accessible to those who have a key, whereas the park bathrooms would be open, similar to our, our typical park bathrooms on the code. And that would be, you know, obviously in the development in terms of how the building would come together through construction. Here's some of the pictures. I just wanted to show some of those before turning it over to Siler Jury. He's going to go into a little bit more detail on what they did. And how we landed with Siler Jury, I, just a little bit of background there was overall impressed by their historic preservation and their adaptive reuse portfolio. Actually, Doug Siler, who's the principal of the firm, has roots here in Radnor Township. And I actually met with them several years ago on the Willow's Cottage, talking about the Willow's Cottage, not to go down that road tonight, but the Willow's Cottage is another ailing building that we have. And that's where our relationship began. So when, you know, we reverted once again on the stable, that's where we got back in touch and it seemed to be a really good fit. And basically, their charge, of course, was to take us, that second look to what Gannett Fleming had did, as you'll recall, last year. So with that, I am going to turn it over to them tonight. Michael Jury is here. He's principal of the firm. And I'll let him take over and then I'll jump back in a little bit. And I'm sure folks are going to have questions.
Thanks, Tammy. That was great. And thank you all for having us here. We've really had a fun time working with Tammy and Steve on this project so far. We started, we started back in December and January and, and really, I think Tammy's sort of charge to us was to really come up with a second opinion for the, for, I guess, costs that you had received today and, and just to try to simplify it as much as possible because I know everybody's working with a budget here relative to what's, what's remaining to be spent on the park. And this is a cornerstone piece to it. And if you can't, our, our charge from our perspective was to try to look at it, try to simplify it as much as we could and get the costs down and, and then put a program in it that made the most sense. And in doing so, what we wanted to do at the end of our sort of evaluation of the building was to come up with a, an overall cost estimate that would be within 5% of what you would expect. I know they were getting cost estimates earlier, I guess about a year ago that were sort of, they seem more general. And what our charge was to just to get very, very specific, as close as we could, to what you'll probably see when it goes to bed. From a, just an historic standpoint, when we started looking into it, it, you know, it's obviously a building that was built at the turn of the century. It was built with, or it was designed by a relatively noteworthy architect. And it's also a, a building that was identified on the township's historic resource survey. And really, just a quick overview of what we did was we, obviously, we decided to take our own assessment. We brought structural engineers through. We went through the prior studies that were done, the hazmat study. We went through the prior studies that were done, the hazmat study and the prior structural reports that were done. And we just did a more comprehensive look at it and just tried to understand what kind of shape it was actually in. And surprisingly, it was, it was in decent enough structural shape. I mean, this, it, the roofing is obviously in disrepair and it needs to be completely replaced. And it did have damage on the west side, which is basically this area here, that I guess either a tree limb had gone through it and it was open and it was actually taking on water. But, you know, I think because it had been used by the township up until, when did you say?
Um, 2010.
Yeah, 2010. It was, it was still in very good structural shape. We actually had Public Works come through. They did some selected demo in some key areas and actually, in actual, actually, there's several rooms in this area, the former bathrooms. There's some rooms off to the side that were used for storage. And it was found that, you know, the, the actual, there's an actual attic floor above and the actual floor for the attic floor that's above spans from, spans from here to this wall here, which allows us to remove all the, all of the existing walls below and it's just sort of clear span that entire space. So in, in addition to just doing all these assessments, we began to talk with the department about, well, what is it that programmatically that you needed to have happen here? And really, it was, we just need bathrooms. We just need bathrooms. We don't need anything else and which is great. And really, the size of the different sidewings that are on either side, these two side, the, one of the wings was actually appropriate size for an ADA bathroom. And in fact, it's a little bit oversized, which we figured you could put in changing tables within it if, if desired. So when coming up with trying to, trying to like do as small a program as possible to save on renovation dollars, we just ended up settling in on just doing just the bathroom here, but then clear, clearing out all the rest of the interior space and basically leaving it the raw stone that it is. And, and it would be just the raw roof, wood roof choice. And then, and then, then we would focus mostly on the balance of finishing the exterior. So we would end up repointing all the stone. We'd be not necessarily replacing all the windows with new windows. I think because of, for safety, we decided, well, let's just infill them with wood panels. If in the future that you would want to put windows in it, you could, but then we would only put windows in the areas where the new bathrooms would be. And we would end up placing all the exterior trim, which needs to be replaced. It would have a totally new roof finish, all new sheathing for the roof and, and then replace the area that was damaged, which is basically it was this side that has to be And these are just elevations of, of each side. And then what we had done was taking that program, we did a series of technical drawings that we then handed off to our cost estimator. And it's a professional cost estimator. It's ICI that's located in Philadelphia, does a lot of our work. And really, the charge to them was to get it as tight a budget as we could. We like called out, we have both a technical drawing, but also a, a long list of, of, you know, speculative materials, like finishing the bathrooms with a tile floor and tried to pick out durable materials and then have them come back and give us a cost estimate. And also including, we did do some work, working with Steve, relative to where utilities would be coming into the building. There is existing water that comes in off of, is that Eagle Road to the, to the north there? And, and electric is there now, but it would need to be rerun also from Eagle Road. And then part of the design was to try to figure out exactly how we would service, service the building from a sanitary perspective. We talked through the different options of connecting it to a sewer and also whether to bring back the existing cesspool tanks that were there. We sort of settled in on doing a hallway septic system. So you can see on the, to the, to the, to the east of the building that there'd be two new tanks. We discussed this with a couple of civil engineers about in terms of sizing it appropriately. It's two 2,000 gallon tanks. And they felt as though, given the, given the anticipated occupant load for what would be coming to the park on a, on a seasonal basis, that that would be sized appropriately for, for, for this structure and for the park. And we just did a couple of quick renderings of what it would look like in a sort of finished state, just for view. And then this was the breakdown of our cost estimate that we have here. And I tried to break this down into the major categories of work, just so that you could see, you know, what the amount is attributed to the, the actual bathroom fit out, you know, if you were to like do a bathroom within a, a new space. But this bathroom fit out number also includes the, the costs associated with the new septic system that would be provided.
So just taking it a step further, we have additional costs, obviously, you know, we look at adding our contingency. So with a project of this magnitude, you know, general addition to that is going to be 20%. We've got the inspection costs. For whatever contractor is going to come in and do the work, we'll see overhead and profit, insurance, there's going to be some permitting involved. And then, of course, adding in the final design, scope of work, project administration costs, which you would be voting on tonight as a number not to exceed with, with regards to Siler Jury's next steps to basically carry this through construction. Our total, as you see here, is 1,058,68. Again, you know, you mentioned within 5 to 10%. They feel confident. We don't know what's going to happen in the bidding process. I think we've, we've all been seeing that happen over every project that's coming through to the Board of Commissioners over the last several months. There's been lots of stormwater projects, lots of things taking place. We know that there's, there's a variable there. We can't always predict it. But as far as the, the addition, you know, would be an escalation, if we were to wait, obviously, we know that we would factor in that could be another, you know, 40,000 to 50,000 on top of this. So, so this is where overall the stable would land us. And then if we look at the project in, sorry, if we look at the project altogether, working in, you know, unison with the stable, all of the work that the township departments are going to be doing, and all of those respective areas have their own built-in numbers and percentages, as I had mentioned when we looked at the initial outline of what those are. This brings us to one, you know, 1,575,000. And then when we look at it relative to the current project budget, which we know right now, money in the bank is at 1,584. I know in previous Parks Board meetings and other more meetings, we've been talking about 1.6, 1.6. We have had, you know, recent expenses that have come out of there for Siler Jury. I think there's been some tree removals that might have been within there and some other things. This is where the last iteration of the budget was when I had spoken with the finance director last week to understand exactly where the account is in the bond. So as we, as we work backwards through all of the improvements, as you could see, you know, it's, it's definitely tight. We're right there. We do feel confident that there are grants that we can get for this project. Definitely something that, you know, we've had, unfortunately, we've had to put on the back burner because we're trying to get a project and get the project aligned, get the scope of work defined. But there have been a lot of grant opportunities that have come along. And just like all of our other projects, we'll certainly be striving to get those. We do have one from DCED that we, we got two years ago, three years ago, that's still sitting there pending. It was relative to the playground. We will be working to see if we could get it re-appropriated to another portion of the project, perhaps, maybe to the pavilion or something else within the project where we can reallocate it. So that would add another 50,000 onto the project. We've just put that on hold and have sent extension letters to keep that money kind of riding until we figure out what was going to happen ultimately with the playground and the rest of the project. So with that, that concludes our presentation. We definitely know there's going to be some questions and we'll be ready to go through those.
Thank you very much for the extensive presentation. So Fenimore Woods in Ward Two, soon to become Ward One. Unfortunately, Commissioner Larkin wasn't feeling well tonight, so he couldn't be here. But I think that there are several points, all of which have been brought up previously, that I'd just like to highlight. One is the historic nature of the stable. You know, we demolished the mansion. It's sort of the last remaining part of the old Wild Woods estate, the Justice Estate, which gives it some standing. I know we all have Fenimore fatigue. You know, some of these folks, Jake and, and Maura, have been hearing about Fenimore Woods for your entire terms, I'm sure. And I've certainly been hearing about it for the last two and a half years that I've been a commissioner, having gone through one whole plan that was passed by the Board of Commissioners and then sort of rejected by the community. I am very much in favor of this project. I agree that preserving the trees is the number one wish of everyone, but I think preserving the stables as a restroom and some storage space is in alignment with the rest of the project. We will assure ADA compliance down here as a separate part of this project, as well as a rebuild of the pavilion, parking, fences, everything Tammy told us about. But I would look for your support in, in pushing this plan forward.
Other Commissioner comments? I just have one quick question and I will not ask more. It was just something that you said near the end, Tammy, about the grant. And you said that would be another $50,000 added to the project. Do you mean offset?
Yes, yes.
You didn't mean like?
Right.
Build out something separate?
No, it would be.
You mean offset the total budget line?
Right, exactly.
Okay. Just clarification. Thank you so much.
Other Commissioner questions, comments? Commissioner Abel.
Tammy, how many, how many trees are proposed at this point to come down?
Zero.
That's good.
Other than the trees that Mr. Foster.
Yeah, so I was, I was going to ask that, make sure we weren't double dipping in there or if there was a cost savings. To be, to be honest, I don't have, I don't have Fenimore fatigue. I, I want to see this project proceed and, and be finished while I'm, while I'm still sitting up here. But I also want to, I also want to see it done right. And two of the things that are concerned to me is no playground. And, you know, I don't know that it's, yeah, I'd like to see it done to the standards that Clemmer-Crone was done. I personally, I don't like crushed stone parking lots. I think they wear it, they're high maintenance and users don't like them. So I would love to see what the cost would be to have a resurfaced lower parking lot. I, I didn't hear your comment on the upper parking lot. Was that to be resurfaced?
So the up, the upper parking lot would be restored to asphalt, like it would go back to asphalt. Would not be porous asphalt. Obviously, that would add, you know, costs onto the project. The walkway that would connect through the park would be porous. So that would be, you know, something that allow for, you know, that permeability throughout the park. The lower lot being, you know, put, put back to crushed stone is something that we heard from the community that they wanted.
Oh, they do with that.
Because of the, you know, the, the natural aspect of it. It was definitely, you know, I know what we heard was do less, do less. That was the running theme of the meetings was just don't change it. As much as you cannot change it, don't change it.
It's, it's a lot of wear and tear if it gets a lot of use. So the maintenance to upkeep and maintain, it's just a lot.
Sure, but it was the aesthetic. I think that we were, we were trying to kind of go within and then obviously there is a cost savings that's there, too. So the ADA spot will be asphalt as well as the apron on the drive-in. It will be, you know, brought back to asphalt.
Okay. And then what ballpark estimate playground, like what, what would that cost?
Probably at least $450,000 in that area. So if we were to do a commercial unit, if we were going to regrade the site, right now I said the site is from 2 to 18% in terms of a slope. So there's a significant amount of infill that's going to have to happen in that site. So if we were to restore that with a commercial playground, same square footage, same sizing, that's what we're looking at. Playground equipment right now is astronomical. In fact, I do believe it's to our advantage to wait. I know, and we also have other playgrounds throughout the park system that are a lot older than Fenimore Woods. Fenimore Woods was built in 2002. You know, we have Odoricio, we have BoConner. Those are 1990s playgrounds. You know, all are seeing similar amounts of wear and, you know, replacement of parts and things like that that are needed. One of the other things that we heard throughout the conversations was a lot of folks are interested in natural playscapes. So we've kind of heard both. So it seems that taking the playground on a different sort of path might, will definitely extend the project, you know, in terms of gaining, you know, more input and understanding. I know I propose possibly doing a hybrid and blending in commercial playground equipment with some play, like play features, like natural play features, like gardens, sandbeds, things like that, like wooden logs, natural, actual natural features. There are companies out there who, who do that. I've had conversations with, you know, companies to see, can we kind of blend those two features together? It's definitely something we can do. But within the remaining funds that's left within the bond, it will not be able to afford it unless something substantial about the rest of the project was to change.
Yeah, I mean, depending on the price, I, I mean, I think this is a worthy use of, again, the, the general reserves if, if, if we have sufficient funds in there. I just hate leaving a park knowing that we still have work to do because once you leave that park, it, you don't know if you're coming back anytime soon to, to finish it off. So while we're there, it'd be good to have that whole vision complete.
Yeah, the, the playground and the pond will be, you will see that in the capital budget, the next capital budget iterations that you see, along with obviously all the rest of the projects that we have that are out there for, you know, funding within the park system.
Good evening. So my understanding of what you said is with regard to the grants, that we have to have the design complete or what's the, what are the criteria to be able to apply for these grants?
Well, it depends on the grants. So for some, you know, they'll, you'll maybe want to see a scope of work that's been developed. So for instance, scope of work that Siler Jury is working on will definitely be something that, you know, could be submitted for a grant. Some of the work that our township engineer is developing in terms of specs with regards to the parking lots and things like that can be expressed also. So it really just kind of depends on the grant and what the grant is looking for. Some grants are looking for planning. Some will look for, you know, just, you know, actual plans and sets and things like that. So there's, I think we have a little bit of a degree of freedom within that. And Melissa Kahn, who's our grants coordinator, has a software system where it's constantly spitting out, you know, grant opportunities for us to look at and read about. And there's really a lot of creative things there. So for instance, the one I listed, the Giant Healing the Planet Grant is a planting grant that could really get us some, you know, additional funds towards some of the plantings that we're planning to do. So I think we can be creative there and hopeful. It doesn't mean it's a guarantee, but there is opportunity to offset.
And so how, what's the lead time for when you apply to win?
Well, it depends on the grant. But if we took, for instance, like a DCNR grant, you know, usually applications are due the end of April, we, you're usually not notified for the, you know, from those until several months later, usually towards the end of the year. But it depends on the grant. Some are a little, little faster, more immediate.
And then when the project's done is when you get the money or what's the deal? How's that work?
Usually they want to see that the expenses have been made and then showing proof of expenses.
And that's reimbursements more than?
Usually that's how they work.
And so what's your opinion on this whole thing? Yay or nay?
I say we bid it and see how it comes in. I mean, this has been the one. I mean, this has been the want and the wish of the community. It's been the direction of the Parks and Recreation Board. I think that it's a minimal investment for us to bid it. Keep in mind, we wouldn't expend the entire $50,300 of the amount of money you'd be legislatively enacting tonight, you know, and approving tonight. It would be just those portions that get us to the point in which we could bid. So any of the actual construction carryout and project administration wouldn't be expended until obviously we made that decision, which would come after a ward.
Thank you, Tammy.
Any other Commissioner questions, comments? Public participation.
Michael Kearney, 124 Walnut Avenue. I've been up here before and talking in support of this project, and I just, I really want to say I'm delighted with the solution that Tammy has proposed for you tonight. I think it's creative and it meets most, at least from my perspective, I mean, the coalition, it's not a, doesn't have like a formal board that has a formal position. But as a longtime member of the Fenimore Woods Coalition, I would just like to say that I strongly support it, and I think this comes very close to meeting what the major set of requirements were that Tammy laid out for you earlier. And I'm delighted that in fact, you know, that Parks and Recreation has listened and has come up with this solution. And I would only say that, you know, so going forward, the coalition, this group of people isn't going to go away at all. And at the extent that you want to have some kind of more formal relationship between the township, especially since the township is going to be doing, is going to be doing the work, I think we would all, we would all be very happy to continue our participate, to actively participate and not just sort of come to meetings and say yay or nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Foster, take names, they're offering to help. Further public participation.
Hello, my name is Sven Idlers, 324 Shimonie Road. I live right next to the park. Thank you, Tammy, for the nice project and for the wonderful presentation. I think it's very clear, and I'm very happy that this project hopefully now finally goes into implementation mode, although I have to say I don't agree with this renovation of the stable. Money is what money does. Are we really on the right track to build a toilet for over $1 million? There needs to be an easier way or cheaper way of finding a solution for that problem. I know it's a historic building, and let's say there might be some sense in renovating it or keeping it alive, but the benefit it generates versus the alternative that is not realized, for example, the renovation of the playground, which is, if I correct, understand it correctly, around about $400,000, yeah? I don't see that we have here the right priority setting, because if you spend $1 million, the quick question is what is the maximum benefit we get for the people that use the park? And I think it's used primarily by children that play there and their parents. And is it really the right priority setting to spend so much money, two-thirds of the total budget, just for the benefit of two toilets that will be in this building? And the question I have is what is a normal toilet costing if you build it from scratch new in any of the other parks that we have?
So the last restroom building that we had built was over at Emlynson Al Park, after, of course, being in the pipeline for probably three decades. So we built that bathroom in 2019. It was a prefabricated building that came to the site. Nothing was demolished or removed in place. It was set in place essentially in an open area that we had already had. And so after we bid that project, that project A to Z ended up being $560,000. So pretty substantial. In looking at this project, we did look at some different options on what it might be to, again, in-kind, if we were to do, you know, obviously construct a new bathroom right in the same location of where the stable is currently, it would include demolition on top of that. And we had numbers coming in around $600,000 on a very, very modest bathroom. And of course, we, I'll just caveat it by saying, you know, we don't know until it gets bid how things are going to come in, but those are where our estimates are taking us right now.
Any further public participation?
Paul Vernici, 470 Glen Mary Lane. Thank you, Tammy. Want to thank you for this. It looks pretty great. I also want to thank Commissioner Abel for asking the most important question of the night, which is how much is this going to cost, not only in terms of dollars, but in terms of trees? I had the same question in my mind. Tammy's answer was zero, and I just want to double check that, because I just want to confirm that the comprehensive park improvements that you mentioned before, like the fence and the trash bins and the parking lot and the ADA accessible path, are we sure that those project components are not going to necessitate any removal of trees? Because I thought that the plan from several years ago that was, that involved the removal of 100-plus trees was, that tree removal was necessitated by the grade and the regrading that would have had to be done for the ADA accessible path. So question, I guess, if you, if you know or if you can get back to us, Tammy, with that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, so on that plan, so a couple of things. First of all, there was plans to expand the footprint of the pavilion that's there now by adding the bathroom to it. So that made it a larger, obviously, square footage footprint, which, you know, trees are all around there. So it definitely, that would definitely have required the tree removals, which is, you know, another reason why we went to the in-kind replacement of the pavilion, you know, same dimensions or smaller within that area. The walking path also was something that meandered through the wooded area. It wasn't just through the current road that exists now through the park. It was something that went through the trees and circumnavigated the park quite a bit on that version of the plan. So again, you know, impacted trees. So as far as any of the parking lot work and things like that that would be done, there's, there will not be substantial changes. Mr. Norsini, he knows his charge in terms of design. We looked at all the trees in those areas. None of those will be compromised, other than, again, you know, the ones that were previously presented that were looked at by Mr. Hossbach in terms of removal. And as far as the walkway and the cut through now through the park where the road is, there's no trees in that area that will be impacted. So I would say if we do, for some reason, encounter a situation that involves a tree, we're going to figure out a way to go around it, because that was number one on the objectives list, and we knew that all along, that that was certainly going to be number one goal we're following.
Thank you. Any further public participation?
Tom Lowey, 417 North Wayne. Like to thank Tammy for an amazingly great job, and I'd like to urge the Commissioners to get this role of all rolling.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone. I'd like to call a vote on Resolution 2024-75 for the $50,300 authorization for Silo Drury to complete a final design. All in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Cohen. All right, we're going back to E. Sorry, I forgot it, I was too excited about Fenimore Woods coming up. Ordinance 2024-04 is an introduction, amending Chapter 280 of the Radnor Township Code and Zoning. Mr. Rice, you want to start us off on this one? And I know that Commissioner Larkin has been very involved with this, and unfortunately, as I mentioned, he wasn't feeling well tonight. So we'll get him on the next round.
So the ordinance that's in front of the board is, as Commissioner Meyer said, came out of some of the conditional use hearings and also came out of some concerns from Commissioner Larkin. He had made some suggested proposals to some of the conditional use provisions. There's also a provision in here regarding building height, which was a concern of Commissioner Abel, who brought up and that was added to this. There's some additional provisions that were added by staff before tonight, and this was, some of this was in front of the board several months ago. So maybe the best way for me to do this, you have the highlighted copy, what is being added here, and I can go through this, you know, rather quickly. Section 1 is a building height, change in the building height definition and how we're going to measure it. We kept the basic measurement in the ordinance, but we added certain things that had come up that builders were starting to put onto roofs of residential dwellings, so single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings. And there was no measuring the height to the top of those additional residential types of structures. So we basically, you know, permitted elevator housing, stair towers, equipment, penthouses, and other types of things on institutional, multifamily, commercial, office, and industrial. They would not be counted towards the height requirement. But if you were putting similar types of facilities on single or two-family, then that was going to be included on the height. Instead of going to the roof, if you're putting a gazebo on your roof, some kind of other structure, then the height's going to go to the top of that structure. So that was the change. That came out of a couple of specific projects that I know Kevin dealt with, I dealt with. Commissioner Abel had raised it at a public meeting early on. So the height requirements stay the same, but we're including certain things in that that have to be now counted, that weren't counted before. So that's section 1. Section 2 is a provision that, and this came from staff regarding parking in the W B O D. And I'm going to defer to Kevin Kachansky on the need for this, because this is something that has created some 20 zoning hearing board applications for people that go to the zoning hearing board to get relief from the parking requirement. So Kevin, if you could...
Sure, and I do believe that this is something that Commissioner Larkin may have been supportive of as well.
This was also correct, yes.
So Section A in the code, right now, the current W B O D parking, this is only affecting W B O D. Currently, the code requires that where there is on-street parking, you utilize that to the extent. However, if you have at least one off-street parking, anything with your use, then you're obligated to meet the code. So any restaurant that has, or any business in Wayne that has one off-street parking space and they're looking to change or to expand their use, and they're non-conforming, then they're in front of the zoning hearing board. And as John mentioned, and I tried to pull the files from the, from our systems dating back through the years, township-wide, there have been over 120 variance requests for relief on parking. The W B O D alone, there were 23. One of them is currently pending. Three were denied and 19 were granted, and that dates back into the '60s and '70s. But it just shows that, you know, Wayne has a fully developed area of town with not a whole lot of on-street, I'm sorry, off-street parking in the individual parcels. That really kind of puts the businesses in a bind to not be able to expand if they have one off-street parking, but the adjoining property that doesn't have any off-street parking is basically allowed to do what they would like to do. So that's where the provision came from, allowing that where there is available on-street parking in close proximity, that they're to utilize that to the fullest extent. However, if you're going to redevelop the property, scrape it like that we're seeing at Luella and Lancaster, then you still need to meet the full ordinance requirements for the parking.
Okay, and Section 3 and 4 of the proposed ordinance modifies the special use area requirements that the board has addressed in a couple of applications pending before it. Section 3 ties in the, there's some general site factors and impact factors which are listed, but it doesn't, there's no direction as to how they're to be used, other than the board should consider it. So we added that, B13, which is in Section 3, that there's the types of factors that can be determined when the board is looking at approval conditions. 4 then increased some of the dimensional criteria. And I want to get to the ordinance here. In Section 4, front yard setback is 25, it would go to 50. The side and rear is 15, it would go to 20. The maximum pervious is currently 90, it would be reduced to 75. And the height would be specific to 45 feet or four stories, where currently it can go up to 55 feet. So some of this was a massing problem with some of the applications that had come in front of the board, and this provides more setback from the street and still permits a fairly significant building. So there are the changes there. Section 5, again, this was a, something that came from, suggested by Commissioner Larkin. You get a lot of different types of applications for dense residential development without any evidence that there's sewer, sanitary sewer available. So this would put a requirement into the application process to show that there's sufficient sanitary sewer capacity available to serve the proposed use. Currently, I think what happens is developers bring in applications, they roll the dice and hope that there's sewer somewhere down the road in the future. You know, this is something that now is going to have to be addressed at the application phase for a conditional use. The Section 6 has to do with a landowner filing more than one conditional use application on the same property. This would prohibit that until the first application is resolved. So this is modeled after a provision that's actually in the municipality's planning code for curative amendments, where developers are filing multiple challenges, different applications, and tying up elected bodies with hearing cases or zoning hearing boards with hearing cases. So this now would apply to conditional uses. It's in state law for other types of applications, but it's not in state law for conditional uses. So it's in the ordinance. This is something that I recommended, and this is part of when Commissioner Larkin and I started talking about this, this was one of the things that we thought we could address. And then the final, Section 7, this came also from staff. Currently, when a zoning hearing board makes a decision on a variance or a special exception, there's a six-month expiration period. It's pretty difficult to do building and get permits and sewer in six months if you're doing a project that involves a new building or substantial build-out. So Kevin can probably address this. I mean, there's, these come up at every, multiple zoning hearing board hearings every year or so. We've increased it to 12 months, which is really more reasonable, reduces the number of zoning hearing board applications, which then have to be advertised, and really doesn't, you know, harm the township in any way, but provides the property owner more time to get their permits together.
As John indicated, that there's a long length of delay between when an applicant, particularly on the commercial side or non-residential side, is in front of the zoning hearing board, obtains a relief, and the time that they're ready to pull the permits. There's sewer, there's land development, and the zoning hearing board has been seeing a lot of requests coming in for continuances and extensions on that six-month period. So this was something that, in discussing with them a few meetings ago, that they asked if there was anything that could be done with that. So we suggested that the 12-month, kind of span that out and reduce the application. So kind of quickens their meetings up a little bit and gets those repetitive requests. So kind of quickens their meetings up a little bit and gets those repetitive requests spaced out a little bit further.
Thank you very much.
So it's up for introduction. The board approves it, it would then be advertised for your hearing next month. The notices would go out that are required under the MPC, and you'd have a public hearing on the actual ordinance next month.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any commissioner questions? Commissioner Agnew?
Two. John? Under 280-137C, so when it says, until such time as the landowner's original application has been finally determined, has that been defined, what finally determined means? Is that, you know, has there ever been a court case that says that means, once it's been through the whole court process? Or does that have to be defined?
Yeah, the whole court process.
Yes, but is that, has that language been litigated, that that's what it means?
I don't think it's been litigated, but I can tell you that what's in the MPC, I was involved in writing that with PSATs, because we had a group of municipalities that had literally six, you have one conditional use in front of you, think about having six curative amendments in front of you, filed by the same applicant on the same piece of paper, but different. So there was a fairly significant uproar, and this was something that I initially put together. PSATs then, which is a statewide township association for second-class township officials, the biggest group in the state for municipal, you know, long government, they have their own in-house council. So that, the final draft of this, which is identical to this, came out of that. But it hasn't been litigated.
So should we just define it? Should there be a definition? So it's not any vague, there's no vagueness?
Pardon me?
No, in other words, if someone says, well, when you finally determine, they'll say, well, the final determination is that we've said no, as opposed to the final determination being the Supreme Court has said, Pennsylvania Supreme Court has said no. Or yes, or whatever it is.
Well, that language, I mean, the way I read it, till it's finally determined, until the original application's been finally determined or withdrawn. So a final determination is the end of the, if there's an appeal...
Yeah.
...is the end of the court process.
All right, so that's what it's going to mean?
Yeah. That's, that's the, and like I said, that, you know, you could always add another word or two if you wanted to add another word.
I just don't want any vagueness and someone challenging.
But, yeah. But the final determination is the whole, you know, if there's an appeal, it would be, you know, the county court, the Commonwealth Court, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. So that's your final determination.
With regard to the parking spaces, where is, which one is that? Parking space one?
Section two.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Again, it's kind of the same idea when it says close proximity. Do we need something more definite or not?
Well, we had adjacent in there at one point, and, you know, adjacent means basically right next to it.
Yeah.
Which seemed too restrictive. So we broadened it to close proximity, and, yeah, we could debate that, but how do you define, you know, is it going to be on the same street? You know, what's close proximity, and then what's the next 10 feet over? So we wanted to make it, you know, generally on the same street in the same area in close proximity. I think, you know, it's a little bit undefined, but adjacent was the other option that we had talked about in there, and we changed it. Because adjacent means, then you're just limited into that, where, you know, it could be two buildings over would work just as well. So if you have a suggestion and you want to wordsmith that, feel free to. But we talked about that. We went back and forth with a couple of different, you know, options. Adjacent was the other one, I think, that we spent some time on.
Can I follow up? Is close proximity used in other ordinances that, like, as a community, we have an idea of what that means?
I would have to look.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'm not, I mean, it gets used in court cases, you know, whether it's used in ordinances. I think we were looking at this being as flexible as possible. I mean, if you're two streets over, that's not close proximity. If you're one street over, that's not close proximity. But generally, I think it...
I'm going to argue that a block over isn't close proximity.
That's the point of the vagueness.
A lot of times, you can see straight through yards and driveways, and you're right there. I do, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Agnew. I think we need to tighten up a couple of our, like, that one, the close proximity, I agree. We should keep working at it.
Okay.
I'll see what I come up with.
Okay.
Any other commissioner comments, questions?
I mean, the other option on that would be put a numerical...
That's what I'm wondering, is do we put...
100 feet, 200 feet, you know? Something like that. Kevin, any suggestions?
I think 200 to 300 feet would be fine. There's a lot of cut-throughs in Wayne where there's alleyways to get from, you know, a business to a parking lot. I did just do a quick search, and there are two references to close proximity in our code, neither of which are in zoning. One is under the stormwater management ordinance, and the other one is the sale of unregulated substances ordinance.
All right, then I'm comfortable with it. I have a couple, are you, okay. So I did notice in the Delaware County Planning Commission comments, they brought up something that I was wondering about, which is if a, so I'm talking about the rooftop...
Right.
Height. So if a person living in a single-family home wants to convert their home to provide accessibility and put in an elevator because they have mobility issues or something like that, that would be my concern. And the planning committee does say that they recommend that the township solicitor determine if the impact of the elevator tower being included within residential and two-family height calculations could be considered a hardship for someone trying to build such units in an ADA accessible manners, where they went. I was thinking more like personal use of your own home if an event happens and you now need...
Well, think about what, I mean, everything that was in the zoning ordinance, that's the only issue they brought up. I was a little surprised. But they're worried that the elevator tower's on top of the roof, right? So it goes up to the roof, and then that would be counted towards a height in a residential use. If it was for somebody with a disability, we have to accommodate that in our regulations.
Okay.
So I don't, I mean, I don't see it...
Is there a need to clarify that in the changes to the ordinance? I mean, right now, it's, if you have a single residence, a house, and you want to put in an elevator, you're, you know, you're not allowed if it exceeds the height. And most existing houses have already hit that height because that's how they were built.
Right. Well, only if you're going to use to go up on your roof and have living space up there, right? It's not just a, I mean, it would be a restriction. The only thing you could do to add here is to put that proviso in the section that this, you know, would not prohibit ADA, you know, compatible type of a facility. I mean, the other thing is, someone that wanted to do that, that had a disability that was prohibited by the ordinance, they could go to the zoning hearing board too, and it would be approved. I mean, that, that might be the easier solution. Or if you want to add an exception to that for someone with a disability, then we're going to get into what's a disability.
Yeah.
Okay. And my next question is for number three. Is this strong enough, shall be considered? So I know that the issue that we ran into is the expectations from community, that we were going down that list as if it was a checklist, and if there was any, anything that didn't fully pass muster, then we were supposed to, you know, it was required to deny. It's not the way it was written, it's the way that, you know, some community and some of us kind of considered it. So I'm just wondering if the foregoing site factors and impact factors shall be considered by the board in determining, does that give us enough, does that give us a strong enough language that we consider and reject? Or, you know, it's the rejection of these factors, even if there might be a little shred that there's some impact on, trying to bring up the...
Well, the, remember the factors...
Well, one of them is impact on township and school services. Yes, there will always be an impact.
Right.
And by saying we should, we are to consider them, it doesn't tell us how we are to opine on that consideration.
Right, yeah.
And that's where we get stuck, is that these seem like they should, that we should be denying every single conditional use application because this list, you're always going to say, yes, yes, yes. I need language that allows us to say, we considered it, but did not see it as an impediment to move forward. Do you see what I'm asking? I mean, maybe it's strong enough, I'm posing the question.
I'm okay with it because that, those lists that are in there, they're very general. I mean, there's no specific. There's nothing in here, for example, impact on township and school services. If you wanted to use that to deny something, there would need to be something more than that, that the impact would be 50% more than what you would normally expect from a type of development or school impact. I mean, you'd have to really get into the building mass height and scale. We all know what that means, but how do you, okay, is it 50% more than every other house on the street in terms of height? So, and I know the residents thought that these were all good reasons to turn this down, but really, they're, in my opinion, the reasons to attach conditions. If you have a defective application, that there's going to be other reasons to turn it down. I mean, we just had one that was in the ordinance, the stormwater, structures in the stormwater. I mean, you know, that was a specific requirement of the open space for that use, that you couldn't put structures in open space, and because the ordinance prohibited. But these general sort of feel-good things, you've got to have more teeth in them in terms of like a denial, because everybody has a different view of what density, building mass height and scale means, I think. Most people have a different subjective view of that, depending whether they live next to it or not, to some extent.
Yes, so I'm agreeing with everything you're saying, but I'm not seeing how this language allows us to consider and reject, or consider and add conditions.
Well, the...
You know, I mean, just saying that we should consider them doesn't broaden or narrow this much at all, because it said, it says, when considering applications, the board shall apply, but not be limited to the following factors. And then you add on...
Right.
...the board can consider it. So it doesn't seem to be doing what we're trying to do in a very decisive manner. But if you're trying to keep it more broad...
Right.
...I can understand that. But I'm not disagreeing with anything you said, I still just don't think it, I don't think it puts any teeth on it.
Well, the other, the other part of it would be to add on the end of that sentence, where it says, shall be considered by the board in determining any approval conditions or in denying the application. I mean, you could add that to it, I'm just saying that that list isn't all that strong without more, you know? And that list ought to be developed, you know, without rewriting this whole section. But if you want to add some more teeth to it in terms of denying an application, you could add that on to the end of that sentence. You know, every application's going to be different, you know, that comes in under that provision. Well, there's actually only ever going to be maybe two more, since there's only two other properties. But, you know, if the board wants to add that, then I would introduce it with that addition to it and just say...
Yeah, I would say that, but I would also, I think there are three, you know, you either approve, you add conditions, or you deny. So I put those three in there.
Right, right, right.
Any other commissioner comment, questions? Any public participation?
Hi, Baron Cameron, South Wayne Avenue. My comment will be on section one, the 280-4, building height. I'm well aware of the, at least one of the properties that was the genesis for that in Jake's Ward. And I'm going to concentrate more on the stair tower and railing for what I want to talk about. I'm in favor of solving that problem, but I'm afraid what we have here, and I'll explain the nuance I want to suggest, is going to raise it in other areas. So the area I'm going to concentrate on is the use of multifamily. And often, we think of multifamily as these big rectangular apartment buildings, often along Lancaster, for example. But just to give you an example, along just the two blocks of Bloomingdale, which is an historic district, there are at least six or seven multifamily, not two-family or not single-family, but true multifamily there, often Victorians with flat roofs, which this would open that, open that door for. Some of those are protected by, in the Harb, the lesser protection of the Harb, but not all of them. And there's similar houses or similar buildings in other districts which aren't in Harb districts, so they wouldn't have that protection of massing or things like that. So what I would like to suggest is slice the multifamily differently, is say, it will not count in multifamilies that are 10 or more dwellings, units within there. So your apartment buildings that might have that or whatever, but the five or six-unit dwellings that we often see on Bloomingdale or something, that they would still have to conform, where their height would be the top of the mancered roof in most cases or things like that, and not have additional height that would affect the massing, and also not have privacy issues in some of these neighborhoods where those houses are typically that height. And they might be right next to a two-family or a single-family that can't take advantage of that, because that's the way it's written. So my suggestion would be, you know, 10 or more, less than 10, in terms of how to divide that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have any issue because we had that, we had that discussion also, whether to even include multifamily in the exception at all. I know, Kevin, I mean, if we put a break, it, you know, 10 or more multifamily buildings of 10 or more dwelling units, I think is what Baron is suggesting. I don't have an issue with it.
I don't have a particular issue in it, but I think the language right now would allow it. Right now, the stair towers and elevator towers are currently excluded from building height definitions throughout the township. So the code that we're, the amendment that we're putting forward is more restrictive in that it's pulling out single and two-family. So I would think in those multifamily situations, they wouldn't be affected in terms of what is currently allowed.
I didn't quite follow that.
Sorry.
Can you restate that?
So the current language in the code excludes stair towers and elevator towers from the building height definition. So it doesn't differentiate between multifamily, single-family, commercial, industrial. Our provisions that we're proposing now exempt out single and two-family, that those are to be included in the building height definition. So if you have a single-family or a two-family building and you want to put in a stair tower or an elevator tower, that tower has to confirm, conform to the building height definition, whereas right now, it does not.
Yeah, but we're talking about, the issue is, we're exempting multifamily in here, all multifamily, along with institutional, commercial, office, and industrial. So the suggestion is do that only for multifamily of 10 or more.
Sure. I was only reacting to the comment that if we eliminate it in one and two-family, that would potentially push it into multifamily. Currently, multifamily has that ability to put stair towers and elevator towers up now unrestricted.
Right, right. But let's, we're talking about, what do we do with multifamily? And I think, I mean, I don't have an... And I think, I mean, I don't have an issue with what Baron suggested, I think that it makes some sense.
No, I actually, I would agree, I have got several of those, you know, I mean, looks the size of a duplex and you find out there are five, six apartments in there. So I think, you know, they can be small and.
Right.
And, you know, have a bunch of folks in it.
So you would amend to say, single-family or two-family or multifamily less than 10 units?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the previous sentence, you know, where they're exempt from that measurement, multifamily of 10 or more. So it's, you know, it's going to go both ways.
Got it.
So that, that revision, and then the revision about the appeal, approval conditions, approval or denial for those factors, the special use, they're the two edits that I have at this point for introduction.
All right. First, I have to say, I forgot to get a motion on the original introduction.
So moved.
And a second. Now, is there any further comment, commissioner, staff, public? Seeing none, I would like to vote for approval on the amended ordinance 2024-04 as outlined by Mr. Rice. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much, that was a little bit confusing to go through.
Well, it's, you know, it was a bunch of edits that needed to be done, it wasn't all in one spot, but we got there, so.
And I would remind everybody that Commissioner Larkin will presumably be here next time and, and put his two cents in, but at least we got it started.
Okay.
Can I just ask for the presentation of the document next time to be a full red line of the section, like those, the factors that weren't listed, it would have been easier to see it, like, and then crossed out, redlined, you know, in a formal editing, legislative editing presentation, it was just a, I had to keep going back and forth.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Yeah, it gives you the context of the, of the comment. Okay. Next, we have, we're, we did F, so we're moving on to G, Resolution 2024-79, Authorization of the Payment of Change Order Number One for Additional Equipment for the King of Prussia Road Bridge Warning System to Lenny Electric in the amount of $14,553 to be funded from the Capital Improvement Fund. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved, and a second. Thank you. Mr. Norsini.
Thank you, Madam President.
We thought we'd heard the end of the King of Prussia.
This is for newer and better, so we've had great success with the system that we have there currently. The one unanticipated consequence that was, its success was based on, there was two chains that hang down and a sign, when a truck hits that sign, unfortunately, there has to be breakaway to meet regulations, so it caused our public works to go out there all the time and have to get the sign and hook it back up, right? So the good thing is, it's been hit 15 times and the bridge hasn't been hit. So went to Pendite, and we showed them some modifications we'd like to make, they in turn told us what our modifications were going to look like. I, I got a little bit of what I wanted, but it's basically what they want, so the current system of a, a sign being the instrument that hit, is hit, will go away. There will be a sign, I thought part of the problem was, even though there are four 48-inch signs leading up to the bridge that give the bridge height, apparently that wasn't enough, so I requested a wider, taller lettered sign. From that, we'll hang a chain and basically pieces of PVC pipe. This was done in Western Pennsylvania, this is what Pendite more or less told us we're going to do. Ours is going to look a little better than that one, of course, but the goal is, A, to still stop the, or to still warn the trucks, and to not have our public works crew having to go out there all the time and pick up the chains and, and the sign. So this amount includes revising the two signals, and also, believe it or not, as they were installing them, they were getting hit way back when. So I had to, you know, I had to have them go out and repair them, but the contractor, Lenai, called me, he said, as I'm installing the one, they're hitting the other. So it's great that we have them up there, this is just a modification that we think is going to serve the purpose just the same, but ease up on some unanticipated maintenance.
Thank you. And the ones that are there now are pretty biddy, beat up already, they've been hit so many times.
Yeah, they are.
The yellow paint's all gone and.
But has the bridge been hit?
No.
No?
I, I think that there actually was one bridge strike, but I'm not sure. Mr. White was going to have that information.
Was there?
Yeah.
I believe there was one.
There was one. Yeah, Mr. White was going to have that for me, but then he had to go.
That's a win-win.
Yeah.
Just one, that's good, since we were on average of one a month over the last decade or more, so that's a good thing. All right, we have a motion and a second, any commissioner, questions or comments? Any public participation on this issue? Seeing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Item H, Resolution 2024-78, Authorization of the Payment of the Final Quantity Adjustment for the Replacement of the Shimonie Road Culvert and Retaining Wall to Richard E. Pearson Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $117,043 to be paid from the Stormwater Fund. Could I have a motion, please? And a second? So that was Mulrooney and, I go, I'm not sure in which order. Mr. Norsini.
Thank you, Madam President. So if you've driven down Shimonie Road, the culvert project is complete, along with the walls. Tammy Cohen, my colleague, showed how some of our tree plantings are already bearing fruit. So during the process of the project, we encountered items we had to change. Oftentimes, there is no line item for that, but in this case, there were many line items that we basically extended. So what we're, what I'm asking is, so when we say final quantity adjustment, for instance, we had a line item for curbing, we had to add additional curbing. We had line items for inlets, we had to add additional inlets. We had to add a considerable amount of piping due to the amount of water that was coming through. There was some additional excavation. So as opposed to specific change orders, at the end of the project, we're tracking this all along, but at the end of the project, the final bill comes in with those quantity changes. That's where we sit, at $117,000. We are well within our contingency, we are at 9% out of the 15%. We have a final punch list walkthrough, but this, this is it, and we request the payment of this.
Excellent, and I have to admit that some of these new big pipes have improved the quality of the pond quite a bit, so.
We are getting some more additional water in the pond, which is great.
Commissioner, questions?
Mr. Norsini, I'm going to ask a question about the fruit trees. Do we harvest the fruit and do anything with it, or is it just open for public picking?
So, we did a couple things, again, as we did West Wayne Preserve in here, we're looking to not burden public works with additional maintenance. So the seeding is floodplain and natural seeding, it's going to grow to a certain height, they don't have to do anything to it. The reason for the, the fruit, so our, our design was done by our arborist, John Hospack, was really for wildlife habitat, right, to help feed whatever is walking through there at night or day, and it could be harvested. So as these trees mature, if we see that there, there actually is a bounty to harvest, we would gladly do that and we could take it to a food bank or wherever. Right now, I think it's going to feed deer, raccoons, and a few other fellows and gals that are walking through.
With two apple trees in front of my house, I can assure you, the squirrels love them and, and the worms, so.
Yeah. Any further commissioner questions or comments? Any public participation on this issue? Seeing none, I'll call a vote on Resolution 2024-78, all in favor? Aye. Item I, Resolution 2024-77, Authorization to Purchase via Co-Stars the Services to Install the Uninterruptible Power Supply Replacement and Bypass for the Radnor Township Building from Valley Forge Power Systems Incorporated in the amount of $110,550,000 to be funded from the Capital Improvement Fund. May I have a motion, please? And a second. There you go. Mr. Tate?
Actually, I'll take that, Madam President.
Oh, all right, sorry.
So we worked, you know, a lot of the bids in the township go through engineering, so we worked with Bob Tate and Steve G. So this is for two things. The UPS system, which you all, all heard about, right? It's a little different in a building like this. So our current UPS system is at the end of its useful life, it's nearing the end, so it's time to replace that. That's about three-quarters of the cost, but there's another item included in here called the bypass switch. So currently, when my colleague Bob Hale has to work on that, he will literally shut this entire building down, he has no choice. No electricity, no backup, no nothing while he works on that. So if we need to do maintenance on the UPS, or if there's an issue with the UPS, this whole building gets shut down, there is no power, he cannot have power going through the lines. By installing the bypass switch, he can now take the bypass, take the UPS offline, the building stays online, and he gets what he, he gets what he needs to get done, will add years to his life, I can tell you that, because he worries very much about all these things, he's a great guy, and that's, that's what we're asking for, we are able to get this through Co-Stars, which means Bob is going to get the equipment that he wants, the specific equipment that he wants.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any commissioner questions, concerns? Public participation on this issue? Yeah, exactly. All right, I'll call a vote, all in favor of Resolution 2024-77? Aye. All right, now we're on to number four, which is the facility bond legislation. Item A, Resolution 2024-81, Engaging Bond Counsel for Series 2024 General Obligation Bonds for Facility Improvements in an Amount Not to Exceed $32,000. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, this is Mr. Tate, I believe.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll also speak to all three items, if it's okay, as they're all related to this one bond issue.
Do you want me to move them all then? Maybe it's the better.
Oh, sure.
Why don't I, I'll just read them all and we'll get motions in seconds and.
That'll be great.
Okay, item B is Resolution 2024-83, Engaging PFM as Independent Disclosure and Pricing Agent for Series 2024 General Obligation Bonds for Facility Improvements in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,700. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley, and a second. Commissioner Agnew? All right, we're going to go for item C, Resolution 2024-84, Engaging Stifel, Nicholas and Company Incorporated to Serve as an Underwriter or Replacement Agent for the Series 2024 General Obligation Bonds for Facility Improvements. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by Ms., Commissioner Agnew, and a second.
Second.
Ooh, I think Riley got that one. All right, now, Mr. Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. As with any general obligation bond issue that the township embarks upon, we engage the services of our outside professionals to help guide us legally, financially, just navigating the entire process. And in past years, Cozen O'Connor serves as the Appointed Bond Counsel for the township, and they're the firm that we wish to appoint with item number A, letter A, for the pricing agent and independent disclosure. PFM, we've been engaged with over many, many years for pricing issues and guidance on the bond issues, and I, PFM is covered in item B. Lastly, item C, I want to point out that the township has had, prior to 2023, a relationship with Benning and Scattergood, and some of you may remember Michael Wolf as the representative, and did the underwriting for Radnor's bonds for going back at least 30 or more years. In 2022, Benning and Scattergood discontinued its municipal bond operations, and that was taken over by Stifel, Nicholas and Company. We have Representative Ed Murray here with his associate, Kristen Krug, who is also a Radnor resident, and when that operate, when their business was discontinued, Stifel assumed not only all of the Radnor operations, but all of the staff who worked on Radnor bond issues for many, many years prior, and, and wishes to continue in the same capacity. Mr. Murray here is, is, would be happy to answer any specific questions you might have with regards to the underwriting process and their involvement, but from our perspective, we see it as a seamless move from the many years of service from Benning and Scattergood and Michael Wolf to Stifel, Nicholas and Company and, and Ed Murray.
Thank you very much. Are there any commissioner comments or questions on item A, B, or C? Seeing none, any public participation on these issues? Also seeing none, I'm going to vote individually. Item A, Resolution 2024-81, all in favor? We'll never know what happened to 8-2. But item B, Resolution 2024-83, all in favor? Aye. And item C, Resolution 2024-84, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous on all three, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to reports of board liaisons. Anybody but me? Oh, liaison, oui. I would like to report briefly from the Board of Health, which met last week, as our current chairman of the Board of Health is leaving town, Alex Yanopoulos, stepped down, and we happen to have here in the audience, I see, Drew Baraneto, who's taking over as head of the Board of Health. I would also like to report that we all got an email from Chief Flanagan, but I don't know that the public knows this, that cooling centers will be, our cooling center here in the township building will be opening up with the hot spell that we're all having, so I would say that as of now, or when I last spoke with Chief Flanagan, if we see frequent use of this cooling center, which we actually have not much in the past, either as a warming center in the winter or as a cooling center in the summer, we could consider further cooling centers within the township, so. All right, any other board liaison?
Yeah, sure. Parks and Rec is looking for more members to join Parks and Rec, so I just want people to know that. And, yeah, the, the last meeting we didn't have, so nothing else to report. Thanks.
Thank you.
I will just report on the Radnor Fire Company. Commissioner Larkin and I attended our first board meeting as liaisons to the fire department, and we were greeted warmly, and they downloaded a lot of information, I believe a lot of it was for our benefit, that they structured the meeting around really informing us of the picture of what they're facing and the challenges around volunteerism, and just looking at the future of the Radnor Fire Company. So, like I said. Fire Company. So, like I said, warm welcome, really looking forward to the partnership and engagement, and we'll continue to report out.
Thank you. Commissioner Agnew?
Sure. So, with regard to the library, there is some new members, significant number of new members to the Board of Trustees. They look extremely well-qualified, so, and, looks like a younger group is stepping up, so that's nice to see. Carry it on. With regards to the envi, excuse me, Environmental Advisory Council, we're looking to work together, since I'm liaison on both. The EAC working with the library with regard to an environmentally aware and helpful disposal of used books that are not being recyc, or not to recycle them, that are, you know, they're, they're not going to be taken for some other use or to some other library or whatever. They're, they're not needed. So, rather than tossing them, we're looking for, maybe using, there's these stripping machines that other township libraries may have that we're going, maybe try to use, or, but we'll come up with solutions so they're not thrown out anymore.
That's terrific. Thank you. All right. Any new business? Old business? Final public participation? Seeing none, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We're adjourned.